Thank you, thank you, this is awesome.
Is anybody here for the invocation? Well, I'll leave it to Tom Curry, he has the invocation.
Alright. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunity to be here, to express ourselves, be in a country in which we are free, are free to discuss what we feel is important. Lord, be with this group tonight as they deliberate and be there, be in their hearts as they meditate on the decisions of the business of Brookhaven. We pray this in your name, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jay Max Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Williams.
Present.
District one, councilmember Jim Meyer, district two.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, district three.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gavio, district four.
Present.
All present.
Alright, please stand for the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, opening remarks, have a couple, quick ones, we'll discuss other things in later on. First of all, there was an announcement about, what was the event, there an event of the cherry tree? Do you want to talk about that real fast?
Yeah, I just want to invite you all on Friday at 10 o'clock at City Hall, we're going to be celebrating National Arbor Day, and it will be National Arbor Day in Brookhaven. We will be planting cherry trees, which later tonight, hopefully, we're going to name as the official tree of Brookhaven. It's to show simply that our dedication to being a green city, to preserving and taking care of our tree canopy. We've launched a great pilot sanitation program, which you'll hear more about later on tonight. And the Japanese consulate will be joining us as well, because as you know, the cherry tree is a sign of international goodwill, and since we're such an international city, we want to celebrate that aspect of it too. Hopefully down the road, in the not-too-distant future, we'll be celebrating a spring cherry blossom festival as well, because is there a prettier place in Atlanta, in the country, than Atlanta in the spring? And we'll launch it all with a great cherry tree festival. Speaking of parks, I also want to give just a quick shout out to the good folks at the Friends of Blackburn Park, who do great work volunteering and cleaning up that park and giving it a lot of love. They were recently awarded a Macy's Heart to Your Park Award for $500 in a national competition, so good to you, Friends of Blackburn Park.
Okay, Bates?
I'd just like to thank the historic Brookhaven Neighborhood Association, the Capital City Club, and Stan Sands and his leadership team for putting on an amazing event for the Brookhaven, the first annual Brookhaven Police Scholarship Golf Tournament at Capital City Club yesterday. They had a tremendous turnout, a lot of great corporate whole sponsors, thank you to all the sponsors of the event, and to all the participants of the event that came out there. We had a really fun time, and the event raised over $75,000 in one event that the police can use, that the foundation can use for scholarship opportunities for City of Brookhaven Police Department, so thank you to them. Those scholarship funds will be available starting this fall, and they're taking applications for them, which is really good. Got a great deal from Capital City on that, they really, really worked well. And that $75,000 was really, that's a high amount for a golf tournament, people, that's a lot of money. So there were a lot of individual contributions, and I think that really shows what people think about our police force. Also, on Saturday, the City of Brookhaven was really proud to work with the North Port Connectors as we did our first, as they coordinated our first cleanup of the Peach Tree Creek, and hopefully you'll hear more about that in a minute. There were three big announcements that were made on Saturday, one was the creation of the Keep Brookhaven Beautiful Foundation, and this is going to be in conjunction with Keep DeKalb Beautiful, which is also in conjunction with Keep America Beautiful, we all flow together. And we will be announcing an ambassador to that position here in the very, very near future. We also announced our effort as a city, beginning next week, to significantly improve our recycling capabilities in the City of Brookhaven. As you may be aware, double bins were delivered to about 28 different homes this past, within the last week and going into this week. One is a 65-gallon green container for solid waste, the other one is a 65-gallon recycling container, in blue, with a nice Brookhaven logo on the side. And the whole idea is to get away from the 18-gallon squares and move it up to the 65-gallons, really increase that footprint on recycling, and then, so that's going to be in conjunction with a pilot program, and that's being initiated by DeKalb Sanitation, it's going to hit two different districts, I think a little bit of yours, Jim? I'm not sure, I think so. But definitely districts one and three, and that's going to be a single-day pickup, so whatever day of the week you have your yard waste and/or your recyclables picked up, that'll be the day your solid waste will be picked up also. So just put everything out one day, and you're done. So five cities are participating, we are going to be the only city actually getting involved in the emphasis on recycling. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Alright, just a couple, yes, go ahead.
Are you done? I'm sorry.
Couple of announcements about the agenda tonight.
Actually, I've got a, are we moving out of opening remarks? Okay, I'm sorry.
The, we're going to reorder some of the items that we know are pretty, a lot of people are interested in, namely the Ashford Green, and a couple of things are going to be moved up to be first, so that people can get their input in first on that. We're, also, after the agenda announcements, there's going to be public comment, if you would please keep your public comments to the, what's on the agenda, I know there's some other issues swirling around that we're going to talk about later, but the public comment, for the first public comment section, the comments that you make have to relate to what's on the agenda tonight. The second comment, public comment section, is sort of a free-for-all, where anybody can say what they choose about anything, but, so that's what I wanted to announce about the agenda, so, and we'll talk about some other things later. Jim?
I've said to those closest to me that I will continue to serve my constituents as a District Two City Councilmember until I felt I could no longer effectively represent the residents of District Two. Based on recent discussions, I believe that time has come. Therefore, effective immediately, I am resigning my position as the District Two Representative in the City of Brookhaven. I would like to thank the residents of my district for their support of me during my time in office. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, agenda announcements.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, if we could, please, go to the items under public hearing items first, because I would like to recommend that we reorder those items, beginning with item number one, we'll keep that as item number one. Item number two becomes the fifth item on the agenda, under new business, item number two, approval to grant authorization to the mayor to sign the Google Fiber Land Lease Agreement. I need to be sure that when you reach that item, depending on what your consideration is, that we refer to it and call it a resolution, and the resolution number is 2014-04-04. And the third matter that I'd like to discuss with you is to add to the consent agenda, the pool, city pool contract. We have USA Pools as our selected vendor to operate our pools, beginning in May. Our city attorney has reviewed the contract to form, the representatives of USA Pool, Pools have reviewed that. There are a couple tweaks that the city attorney has informed you of, but other than that, the contract is ready to move forward, and this will enable us to release the company so they can get started, and then to get the pools ready for Memorial Day weekend opening. I think the city attorney, my, 2014-04-04, that's for the Google. Yes.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, further amendments to the agenda include a resolution being Resolution 2014-04-05, to amend the agenda to consider a resolution authorizing the release of city attorney representatives Keith Jernigan and Laura Cosgray, notes of the November 22, 2014 executive session. The next item of new business would be Resolution 2014-04-06, to amend the agenda to consider a resolution authorizing the release of the mayor to discuss in today's council meeting the subject matter of the August 2013 executive session wherein the city manager's work schedule and compensation schedule, compensation amount was discussed. The next is to amend the agenda to consider a resolution being Resolution 2014-04-07, a resolution authorizing the city attorney to respond to WSB TV to the double-dipping and unethical allegations against the city manager. And finally, to amend the agenda to consider a resolution being Resolution 2014-04-08, to direct the publishing of elected and appointed officials' compensation benefits and reimbursed expenses on the city website.
The pools will be on there too?
Yes, they're already on there, for consent agenda.
And the Google?
And the Google, calling that as a resolution.
Alright. Okay, that's it? Alright, public comment?
Do we need to have a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, we have to have a.
Sorry. You amend the agenda as stated by city attorney?
Yeah, I amend that we.
And Marie also.
I amend the agenda as stated by our city attorney and city manager.
Alright, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of amending the agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. Where are they going, towards the?
In new business.
Okay, alright. Alright, public comment section, first public comment section.
I have two public comments that do not pertain to resignings, but it also does not pertain to new business.
Okay, so those will be moved to the end, so if there's no public comment for this section, we'll do it to the second public comment section. Alright, thank you.
If we make a comment during the comment section, and somebody wants to comment about it.
Right.
Okay, so that's one of the.
The comment, you're correct.
Alright, so Daniel?
Thank you. Alright, can send agenda?
One of the requests is to make a comment about a comment tonight, that was made up in the.
So it'll be on the agenda, it'll be in the second section?
Yeah, but the, the agenda, okay, we don't make it part of the agenda.
Right.
Thank you for that clarification.
Consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, there are two items on the consent agenda, number one is the approval of the April 15th Brookhaven City Council regular meeting minutes, and then the second was what we just amended, which was the approval of the USA Pools contract.
Alright, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Didn't you say that the representative with the pool contract was here?
Yes.
So could we take these items separately? I wouldn't mind here.
Sure, absolutely. So the first one is the?
The minutes. So I would move that we approve the April 15, 2014, Brookhaven City Council regular meeting minutes.
Okay, secondly, any discussion? All in favor of approval of minutes, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. Number two, the pools?
While he's coming up, if I could just mention and then ask Ray to come up, because I think it's important to note that we did bid this out, we had a number of bidders for the project. Ray Holloway, our recreation director, along with our deputy recreation director or park superintendent Brent Walker, reviewed and graded each of these bids, so if you could please just enumerate all of the items that were required for the companies to bid on, such as the swim teams and the swimming lessons.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Yes, we actually had, went out for bid for this, we had five companies that bid on it. What we took in accountability is programming offerings such as like the various swim lessons, aerobic classes, movies, and things of that nature, as well as concession stands, operational, to improvements with the pools, of course, you're very aware that they all need a lot of improvements to it, and we took that, Brent Walker and myself, and we graded this out, and USA Pools is the one that we'd like to make a recommendation to.
Okay. Thank you.
Could you just review real quickly, because I think people are real anxious to find out about the pools opening, what we think is our opening dates, our opening hours, and the services that would be provided?
Can I bring John up?
Sure.
Sure.
John, if you would, let him, he's a representative of USA Pools, he can elaborate a little more in detail.
Great.
You look like a really laid-back pool guy.
Go for it, it's territory.
Pull the mic up before, please. Thank you.
So can you just tell us when the pools will open and what hours they will keep?
They will be opening on Memorial Day weekend, that Saturday. I think we projected the standard pool hours for open swim to be between 12 and 6. We'll be entering into follow-up implementation meetings in the coming weeks to make sure that we're meeting the needs of various user groups or special interest groups to maximize the pool usage and increase participation.
So that's 2016, when, in the summertime, is that for Memorial Day or for the rest of the summer?
For the entire summer.
Okay.
Until the school returns in session, then it'll return to weekends.
Okay.
But it's open on the weekends.
Right, okay.
Seven days a week.
Seven days, okay, great. And is there provisions for the swim teams? I mean, because swim teams will be using it off-hours, obviously, in some cases, and...
There are provisions for every kind of programming that we can include with expandability to increase niche markets and any kind of user groups that would want to utilize these facilities, as well as we've put into play that we're going to be rebranding these facilities to really change the, initially the aesthetic.
Right.
From what it has been to launching into a new city operation, and so getting it its own personality.
Alright, do, have you, not yet, I wouldn't expect you to admit, but will you be, before you open, will you have any problem meeting with some of the swim teams that aren't existing? I think there may be two.
That'll be an important part of our programming and implementation processes, to meet with as many user groups from the local area, as well as any businesses that want to help sponsor, be a part of advertising, anything and everything, to boost revenue and participation at the facilities.
Who is in charge of it, if our swim teams that exist have to pay a fee, or, you know, whatever that is? I mean, what's the, how does that typically work? What do we have in the past, do you know?
The registration will be through a software program that we maintain, but the revenues will be coming to the city.
Okay, well, we'd like to just make sure we talk to the residents and the swim, and the resident swim teams, see what they did in the past, make sure that we're not burdening those teams, because I know the Murphy-Candler team in particular got up to 108 swimmers last year, and that's, it's a revitalization of that program, and I'm not sure about Briarwood Park, but I know they, Briarwood Pool, but they have.
We are active in meeting with DeKalb County and their, whatever their programs are. If there's another alternative that we want to investigate, we'll certainly do so.
So you're confident that by May 23rd, there's, you know, there's some significant maintenance issues at some of the pools, and we have three, right?
Correct.
So I would think that there's a couple that have some significant issues at least? Are they all, are they all on the same level of deterioration, or are they? I heard there's a jack holding up the pump in the Murphy-Candler pool.
There's a number of opportunities for us to improve.
I like that, I like that, that's a positive way to look at that.
Thank you.
And so, we will, upon authorization this evening, we're going to pull together our first implementation meeting later this week, in order to put the nuts and bolts into how we're going to step through this to meet the deadline.
And when I was a kid, I used to go to the Murphy-Candler pool and pay my 50 cents and get in, and we'd get down there, they had a high dive, and we were able to rock the pool, and there's no more high dives, can we get a high dive? It's gone, no, they took it away.
You'd really rock the pool now.
Some kid broke his hand, trying to get too close to the exit, you know, we were trying to do it real quick, so there's a big liability with high dives.
Well, I think we're all anxious for a great pool opening, and I was nervous whether we were going to get it open in time, but I'm thrilled that you're coming on board, and I've read the contract, it looks great, and we look forward to great things from you all.
Very good, we look forward to serving you, thank you.
One last question, will you be able to participate in any of the parks and recreation steering committees that we have the citizen groups?
I know that's not part of your contract, but we're having these meetings and...
If we get volunteered for any of these things, we'll be a part.
Oh, yeah.
They're just great, they're great occasions for listening, you know, about some of the input, you can get, you can get a lot of people there at once in those meetings.
I don't know exactly what I'm being volunteered to do.
It's pretty painless, pretty painless.
Listening to our citizens will help the contract for year two, so that's a go-to those meetings, alright.
We're going to make every attempt at transitioning your facilities from a cash basis over to credit cards and debit cards, to where we don't have a cash management issues that people have had in the past, and so.
You're going to make the little seven-year-old carry a card, he can't put his four quarters in there?
Well, we've got membership cards, and so we'll be distributing those, and parents will be able to put money on the kids' accounts, so that they'll have everything they need to be able to participate, but.
You can just give them tattoos with their account number on them.
There you go. The more we can move away from cash, that's going to be, I don't even know if it'll be that big of a change for anybody, it's just an implementation issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Alright.
I would move that we accept the pool contract between the City of Brookhaven and USA Pools.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the contract, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. Announcements? Any announcements? Okay, no announcements. Reports and presentations?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, last week I informed you all that our consulting firm Pond &amp; Company, who's doing our zoning map audit for us, was able to retrieve a new set of 77 case files that we had never had before, and through that discovery, they've already gone through all of them and are now working on formulating their report of all of their findings, we hope to get that within the next 30 days, and then we will begin the process of curing the map, which will then go to the Planning Commission for adoption, because we'll have to follow the Zoning Procedures Act. They will hear it, consider it, and then make their recommendation, and it will come before the mayor and council. As you know, when we launched this zoning map audit, we said that we would hope to have it adopted or re-adopted by August, so with this great news, I'm hoping that we might be sooner than August.
Well, it's great news, but it's kind of a, got a...
No, correct, we have to, we have to cure everything, we have to be sure nothing else is missing.
Right, so we're, this is, what you're saying is that this, these are the last files that they can say could be in existence, so there's still files out there we'll never get?
Correct, but remember, part of this audit, and that's why this report's going to be so important, part of their task was to go through all of the Board of Commissioner meeting minutes from the 1950s forward, so that's going to be cross-checked with the zoning cases, but then also there's a third part whereby all of the recorded plaits are going to be reviewed, because many times on recorded plaits are special conditions and notes that could have come pursuant to a directive from the Board of Commissioners, and so that's going to be reviewed too, because there could be special stipulations on area regulations as assigned to that particular plat, so that will be reviewed as well. So there's still a lot of cross-checking, but as far as the component of retrieving all of the files, that now has been exhausted.
Thank you.
As we best know, are available.
Alright. Park purchase?
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney on an update for our parks purchase.
Thank you. The, Friday is the 30th day in which the city is to deliver the deeds, they are having a meeting on Thursday, we don't anticipate delivery on Friday, they will need, or at least they say that they have to have the authorization from the county commission, the meeting of which would be May 13th. We will, once we get the reaction, or at least to the extent that there are any questions that they have, or any parks that they take issue to being transferred, then we'll advise accordingly. We should also be in the position to go ahead and tender on Friday the amount of money that we're obligated to pay for the parks, which is somewhere around $25,000.
I said this earlier in the work session, we've been, we've done all the work on our end about how to purchase the parks officially, we have, we're taking over the maintenance, we're responsible for the maintenance, obviously we're moving forward with lots of maintenance, but I would ask each of you to please contact your county commissioner, whether it be a Lamborier, Kathy Gannon, or Jeff Rager, to let them know that you want the parks purchase finalized, we've been waiting and waiting and waiting, and we really need, we're waiting on DeKalb County to get that down, it's been months. We'd like for citizens of Brookhaven to be able to enjoy the parks that they're paying taxes for, and enjoy them in the way that they know they can be enjoyed and be improved in the way they expect, so you could just give that message to our county commissioner, we'd appreciate it. Alright, update on City Hall?
Yes, I'm happy to report to you that late Thursday afternoon and into the night of this week, the rest of us that remain in the lower level of the building are now moving to the third floor, council offices are going to be completed as well, so that's only half of the third floor, the other half, as you know, is our council chambers, and that will be delivered to us May the 2nd. I would like to just take a moment to recognize a few people. Brad Middlebrook has just done a yeoman's job, when we moved into the building initially at the end of March, yes, end of March, I'm trying to think, everything is sort of phasing together, all of that was done over a weekend, and in order to save money and not pay another month's rent, all staff, everyone, moved into the basement, and, you know, we all found out how to be good roommates, and so he was just excellent in getting us all moved in, but not just moved in, but also all of the necessary equipment, and our IT department did a fabulous job, they were there very, very long hours, making sure everyone's computers were up and running, the city's website, so, and even to the point of, when we were down with our server, there was a couple hours that our police department was affected, so they were, they were there probably close to 24 hours straight, making sure, and so when that switch occurred, it was during the very late night hours, early, early morning hours, so I appreciate the work that InterDev did, especially Christie, I don't know if she's back here in the audience, but she pretty much lived in that building as we were moving in, Brad just, he did everything, and I think including driving the furniture trucks, so whatever needed to be done, he absolutely did that. Also, Hit Construction has just been fabulous, who is the contractor for the owner of Delta Life, Delta Life has been so generous to us in providing and giving us very beautiful furniture, along with Flood Brothers, we've gotten furniture from them too, through Autotrader, and so we've just, we've had a number of companies, corporations, and individuals that have helped us.
Most of the furniture's been donated, is that correct?
Correct, the majority of it has been donated, so we've, I've just been very proud of the team, and very appreciative of all of the logistics planning that Brad Middlebrook brought to us, I'd like to commend them all, thank you.
I just want to add that Brad is a hard-working individual, I stopped by City Hall on Easter Sunday, and he was in there working, so.
He and I have conversations starting about 5:30 to 6:00 a.m., and he answers my email at 3:30 a.m.
Hey, Brad, real quick, as you're being praised here, there are a lot of folks standing up, are there chairs in the, in the conference room that we can get for some folks, possibly? Alright, while you're doing that, well.
I see it.
Exactly, thank you.
You know, there's so many people to thank and I don't want to miss this important opportunity. Our city attorney's office, Keith Ternigan, did a tremendous heavy lifting on our lease agreement. So, I don't want that to not go mentioned. So, thank you, Tom.
All right. Thank you. Yes. Okay, public hearing items.
Okay. We'll begin with item number one, and that is the launch of our comprehensive plan. And this is what we're calling our commencement hearing. This is an official public hearing to launch the comprehensive plan in accordance with the Department of Community Affairs rules and regulations pursuant to the Planning Act of 1989. And I believe Ms. Cannon has a quick introduction and then we will turn it over to Jacobs to make the presentation.
When do I open the public hearing?
Right now, sir.
Okay. The public hearing is open.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Nick Marie. As Marie indicated, this public hearing is required. And as of March of 2014, the rules for local planning changed and went into effect. So, we're following the new rules. This is a very exciting time for the city of Brookhaven. We're very happy to be here tonight. This is a very important time for the city of Brookhaven. We do have quite a few steering committee members that are engaged tonight. I did see that Stan Siegel is here. He's the chairman of our comprehensive planning steering committee.
Hands, hands, Stan.
So, if you're here with the comprehensive plan steering committee, would you please stand?
Stand up, yes.
And if there are any other members from other committees such as the Transportation Steering Committee, or the Recreation and Parks Steering Committee, or the Beaufort Highway Steering Committee, would you also please stand?
All right.
We want to thank all of you so much for your dedication and time and we look forward to this engagement process. Having said that, the firm that we engaged in the comprehensive plan process is Jacobs. And tonight with us, we have Amanda Hatton and Chuck Button. Amanda Hatton is actually the lead for the comprehensive plan process. So, the purpose of the hearing tonight is to do the commencement kickoff, to identify the public participation process and the process by which we plan to engage the public and move forward with the comprehensive planning program. So, without further comment, I'll have Amanda come up and give you a short, probably no longer than 10-minute presentation. And at her conclusion, I'll make a few closing remarks before you hear from the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Susan, and thank you to the mayor and council for having me here today on behalf of our planning team. It is quite an honor to be representing the planning team to help kick off Brookhaven's first-ever comprehensive plan. And to echo what Susan said, the comprehensive plan is really a very important process for communities. It sets the vision for the future, community-based plan and effort. And so, this is a really important time in the city's history and it's very exciting for us to be involved in that process. As Susan said, I have just a very brief presentation to highlight some of the key aspects of the planning process, including our schedule, who makes up the planning team, the process by which we'll be going through things, and of course, highlighting the public involvement process at the very end. So, to start, why comprehensive plan? Well, there are a lot of good reasons and just want to focus on a few here today. One, it's really valuable to sit back and say, okay, this is where we are today and where do we want to go in the future. And that's what the comprehensive does, comprehensive plan does. It really sets the stage of where we are at this moment in time and how we're going to get where we want to go down the road. It also establishes that community-based vision for the city. This is a community-based plan. We hope to have a great deal of public involvement throughout the process and that the plan will really be a ground-up effort from the community. It also establishes policy guidance for the day-to-day decisions of elected officials, you all, as well as the city staff, to help make those day-to-day decisions and also guide investment decisions in the city. A really important aspect is setting up a plan that can be used by the private sector as well as the public sector and leveraging what the city is planning to do to help make their decisions. It's, you know, like having a business. This is the city's plan for the future and it helps people decide that they want to spend their time, their money, to live, to play, to work here in Brookhaven. And so, this is an important and valuable blueprint for that, not only for the city as well as for those that are looking to locate here. And finally, this meets state planning requirements. All of the municipalities and counties in the state of Georgia are required to complete a comprehensive plan and update it on a regular basis. All communities are currently required to update at minimum on a five-year basis. Wanted to briefly just highlight who the planning team is. There's a lot of partners that go into that. We have, of course, the city staff led by the Community Development Department managing the overall project. We have our consultant team that will be leading a lot of the work. Jacobs Engineering, my firm, is leading the project management as well as the lead planning tasks for the effort. We also have on our team Market Street Services who specializes in economic development. They'll be looking at economic development and demographics. We also have Sycamore Consulting who will be leading the public outreach effort. And you'll also see on there the steering committee that is our voice, that will be vetting ideas against and helping give us direction throughout the planning process. We saw that a few of those folks are here today with us. Of course, the public is a huge, important element of this plan. As I said, their input will really shape the different aspects of the plan and how it looks like at the end of the day. And of course, you all as the elected officials are an important element to this, hearing the priorities and needs from your perspective and at the end of the day, adopting the plan and helping be the voice for its implementation in the future. The planning horizon for the comprehensive plan is 20 years. So, we're looking at a 20-year vision. We're thinking ahead. And I like to think back about 20 years ago, the Olympics hadn't even happened in Atlanta. So, a lot changes in 20 years. So, we're thinking big about where we're going. But it is a practical, implementable plan. At the end of it, is a five-year work program that is intended to be implementation-focused and practical. So, although we're looking at 20 years, we are focused on those priorities and needs for the next five years. And as I mentioned earlier, the plan is intended to be updated and modified on a regular basis, could be annual or every five years as required by the state. Because things do change, the community changes, you move forward, and it's important to sit back and reflect on what's changed in the city of Brookhaven as well as the greater environment in both the region and even the country. The plan will be organized around three key elements. Community goals are the first element. That'll set the overall vision for the city's long-term future. It will also set key goals that the city hopes to accomplish. And it will also set the character area map, which is a very important policy document that will be used in zoning and development decisions in the city. And that sets the vision for each of the unique areas of Brookhaven and how we see them staying the same or changing over time. And so, that's part of the community goals. The needs and opportunities will highlight those priority needs that will ultimately shape the community work program, which I already talked about. There are several key substantive elements of the plan. Those highlighted in green to the left are the ones that our team is focusing on: land use, demographics, economic development, and housing. The economic development element will be informed by the Beaufort Highway Plan that's going on concurrently. We're also looking at community facilities and transportation. Both of those items are also informed by two of the other parallel planning efforts, which Susan will talk to a little bit later. We'll be incorporating the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and also the findings of the Transportation Plan. The timeline for the planning process is seven months. So, we're on a pretty tight schedule. To get this done, the city does need to adopt a comprehensive plan by the end of the year. So, the first couple months, which is where we are right now, we're focused on getting the project kicked off like we are doing tonight and also doing our baseline conditions analysis. In June, we'll move into our visioning, the community goal-setting. I'm sorry, that's in May. And June, we'll move on to identifying needs, opportunities, and strategies with the public. And then, in June and August, we'll start working on that community work program and pulling the actual planning document together, preparing it for a Planning Commission hearing, for another hearing with you all, and then sending it off for regional review. The goal is to have the plan adopted in October. Up here on the screen right now is a list of the different meetings that are going on for this particular comprehensive plan effort. There are a total of four steering committee meetings that are being held. There are also two joint steering committee meetings being held with the other parallel planning efforts that are going on over the same time period. We have two public workshops planned. The first one will be on May 15th at St. Martin's Episcopal Church. And we also will be carrying out a community survey that will be available online. And we're also about to undergo a process of interviewing several community stakeholders. They'll help inform the plan. For the benefit of the public, there will be a public involvement plan. We're in the process of finalizing that now with the city's staff and getting input from our steering committee. But that will be posted to the city's website soon for the public to review and have a comprehensive understanding of how they can be involved. We are also coordinating with the city's communications department on helping get the word out through the social media channels that Brookhaven has underway as well as the newsletters and the multiple forums that you all have for getting information out to the public. So, a quick pitch for the May 15th meeting. We want to know what's your vision for Brookhaven. We hope we'll have a good turnout. As I said, that'll be at St. Martin's Episcopal Church, 6 to 8 on Thursday, May 15. And with that, just wanted to leave our contact information. All comments, questions about the comp plan we're asking be sent to comprehensiveplan@brookhaven georgia.gov. Of course, I'm available for any questions and comments throughout the planning process as a project manager, as well as Susan Cannon as the city's point of contact for the plan. And with that, I'll go ahead and turn the lecture back over to Susan.
Just want to mention, I think you did mention it, but the master list for all the meetings are on the website. And we need to make sure everybody knows about that. You were about to say that.
Thank you, Amanda. Daniel, could you display the master schedule? We have displayed the master schedule for all the meetings, for all the steering committees on the website. That is available now. We've also provided copies of this in the back of the room, so that's available to anyone here who would like to obtain a hard copy of the schedule. And on one of the slides that Amanda presented, you saw how the Beaufort Highway Plan, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and the Transportation Plan fold in together and work in relationship and in concert with the land use plan. On Thursday evening, we do have a joint steering committee meeting and a joint consultant meeting with all four planning initiatives so that we can see right now how we're beginning to connect the dots and what we're seeing in common among, across all planning initiatives. So, without any further ado, mayor and council, this is a very important time. We're very excited. And this is the time for the public to speak to you about this process that we have planned to go underway and whether they feel comfortable with the process that we plan to use. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you both. Been beating this like a dead horse, but please, the comprehensive plans, the Beaufort Highway Plan, the park plan, and the transportation plan. We have consultants. They're qualified consultants. But your input is much more valuable than their input in my mind. They have a lot of expertise. They can help guide you here and there. We want our plans to be a reflection of what the will the citizens of Brookhaven want. What you want to see in 20 years, what your density is, what your development, what you want to see, how you want to see your parks improved, what you want your parks to look like. All that's got to come from y'all. And please tell your friends and neighbors. It's very important. And I'm not just saying this as a cliche. It's just important that you give your input because I have my opinions. We all have our opinions. But we, you know, we don't always necessarily know exactly what everybody thinks. And we really, if you don't go, it's going to end up being a lot of people with little niche special interests getting what they want to the forefront. I mean, we're the ultimate guardians of what the plan's going to look like. We'll have to approve it. But our job is to be so much better as your elected officials if y'all give your input and come to these meetings. Please come to at least one. There are several, of course, as you've seen. But whatever your interest is, particularly, I mean, the comprehensive plan is going to be the most important one because it covers everything. So, and Stan Siegel's a great guy. He's a great chair of the Planning Commission. He's big on input, just like I am, and letting people talk and have their say. So, we really want you to give your opinions and let us know what you think and what you want for the city of Brookhaven over the next 20 years. So, thank you. Please come to him. All right, next?
Yes, the next item is number two, which is the old number four. This is RZ 13 dash... Oh, excuse me. Yeah, sorry.
It's okay.
Excuse me.
Public comment again. Yes, public comment is open.
Does anybody want to make a comment here about the comprehensive plan? You're welcome to come to the mic and share.
All right. Okay. Close that public hearing. Come to the meetings, please. Next.
Okay, the next item is RZ 13-11, SLUP 1301 and SLUP 1302, John Hancock Life Insurance Company rezoning request from office institutional conditional to OI at 4170 Ashford Dunwoodie Road. Mixed-use development consisting of 500 multifamily units, 563,578 square feet, 250,000 square feet of office space, and three parking decks. Special land use permits to exceed the height of all building structures over five stories and 70 feet for the development of high-rise apartments in the OI zoning district have also been requested.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. As you indicated, this is RZ 1311, SLUP 1301 and 1302. This particular item has gone through a number of public hearings. So, for purposes of tonight, the staff stipulates to the staff report. We will identify for you that during the Planning Commission hearing, the vote on the matter was a vote of 3-3 tie. So, there is no recommendation from the Planning Commission on this particular request. The staff did recommend approval. There are a number of conditions within the staff report located in your packet. On packet page 34 and 35. There are 19 conditions recommended by the staff, of which the applicant has agreed to. In addition to those conditions, there were a list of suggested conditions submitted by the perimeter CID, of which the applicant did agree to. If you do not have any questions for staff, I know that I did a very lengthy presentation on this some time ago. And if you don't have any questions, I'd like to allow time for the public.
Let's do that.
Thank you.
All right. Public hearing's open on this section.
Right, and for the applicant to present.
For the applicant to present, okay.
Thanks.
It's a very narrow corridor over there. They're making us fit through, Doug.
Mr. Mayor, it's harder to get through those tight spots than it used to be. For the record, I'm Doug Dill with Wiseman, Noack, Currie, and Wilco. We represent the applicant. You've heard this presentation before. I'm going to incorporate what we did before when it was deferred. Basically, we're converting 250,000 square feet of office space to 500 residential units, 260 rental, and 240 owner occupied. I have given you a copy of the site plan that shows the design and projected development of the site.
Say that again. I'm confused. Say that one more time. It's the 260. It's the 260.
We're converting, we're converting 250,000 square feet of office space to 500 residential units, 260 rental, and 240 owner occupied.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay. The staff's recommendation of which there is 19, we agree to. We also have a letter of support from the Oak Hills Neighborhood Association, which we also ask be spread on the record, and we're available to answer any questions. I have given you a copy of the site plan, which has been filed with the application, and with that, I'm going to reserve my remaining time for rebuttal. And thank you, and we are here to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Public comment, public hearing.
Mayor, I meant to indicate, I know that several emails were received and several comments. We also provided a hard copy of those because we weren't sure if you all received them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I did say, I think that the staff's recommendations and the PCID's recommended conditions are acceptable.
All right, Daniel.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to read two public comments into the record at the request of the members of the public. These are in opposition. The first is from Lisa Byrd. She's appearing in opposition to RZ 1311 to the proposed mixed-use development consisting of 500 multifamily unions. The second is from Pamela Rock, and she strongly objects to the negative impacts to my children, their school, their quality of life from the proposed property.
Okay. Is there more, more public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. A pleasure to be before you. I'm here in support of this measure with one conditional recommendation, and that we evaluate the following. It became very, we became very acutely aware of this on March, the end of March.
I'm sorry, could you state your address?
Oh, it's 10 Perimeter Summit. I live in Villasenoma. End of March, we had a two-alarm blaze at Villasenoma. I'm a member of the HOA Board, the COA Board, I'm vice president. I spoke directly with the fire personnel that were on site, and they told me we were extremely fortunate on three points. Point number one was that the blaze occurred at 4:30 in the afternoon on Thursday. Had the blaze occurred at 5:30, it would have been another delay for them to get there. We were fortunate on point two, because Station 21, which is the closest responding unit, was not on call. It took them 10 minutes to make a little over a mile journey to get to us because of traffic. Point three they made to me was that if they'd had to go to an alternative station, it would have been 30 minutes before they got there, and on a wood-framed residential structure, it would have been disastrous. We've lost the entire top of the building because it's a wood frame and it started in the roof. As it is, we lost 40, we have 40 residents that are going to be displaced for four months. My recommendation is that we take this back for a brief analysis to see what we can do for emergency response. The concern here is when we open for dual use and we bring in wood-framed residential structures, the time to respond for residential structure is critical when you have it in an area you cannot get to. So, the fire department told me this specifically. There are three units in our area, ours is one, that they don't ever want to burn because it's difficult to get to it, and it's a wood-framed structure. So, my concern here isn't about traffic, it's about emergency response, and specifically about public safety regarding fire and getting to that area on gridlock, because on Ashford Dunwoody, if you're going to come from the alternate station, they're going to be coming in traffic on a two-lane road that will be packed with no alternative route to get there. They estimated it would have been 30 minutes to get there. So, I just put that before you as a concern. It's not an objection. I think we can get there. This is a great opportunity for our community to get to dual use. We just got to raise that one issue. When you have residential mixed with industrial, it brings a unique concern.
Thank you. Next.
That's the only support comment I have received.
Okay. Opposition?
Madeline Suits.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Madeline Suits. I am a residential real estate agent in Atlanta, and I specifically sell in the city of Brookhaven. I strongly oppose this. I have four children that attend Montgomery, and we are already in overcrowded facility. And when you bring in apartments, whether they are homeowners or they are renters, they are going to, people are going to strategically position themselves to want to rent in our area to attend our school because of its high ratings. We're already at capacity and exceeding it every day. We can't afford to have multi-units doing it. Second of all, the traffic is unbearable as it is, and when they came and presented at our school, they have not done any studies or anything to approve the traffic, and I can't even, and it's my client's unit that burned at Villasenoma, and I'm telling you there's no way that ever, if we have those apartments there, that they're ever going to be able to get there. And I know that they think that apartments are better than commercial, but knowing the residential market, they're not going to build a commercial building because they can't fill a commercial building at this state, but they will build those apartments tomorrow. Again, it's the traffic and the overcrowding of our school. And I just, as we watch the, it's the same mistake that was made when they closed Nancy Creek, because they said Brookhaven wasn't growing and people weren't having multifamily, more than one kid. I'm an example, I have four that go to Montgomery, so, and we have tons of neighbors and everything that are having two and three and four children. So, that's, that's not right, and hence, we're dealing with an overcrowding and a ridiculous amount of traffic. You can try to get to Murphy Camler, or you can try to get to Perimeter on any given day of the week, and it is an absolute nightmare, and this will only make it worse. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Suits. Next.
Elizabeth Wordersheim.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Wordersheim, and I live in District 1. I'm here tonight to share my concerns about proposed rezoning of Ashford Green. Tonight's decision is going to impact everyone in this room and set the tone for future development in Brookhaven. By denying this zoning application, you will give Brookhaven a true opportunity to chart its own path. My primary concerns are, first, lack of master plan and infrastructure; two, impact on our community school; and, third, density of this project. I'll elaborate real quickly on these concerns. First, we don't currently have a Brookhaven comprehensive plan. We have started the process, and we need the time to complete the master plan, and the citizens would like the opportunity to share their thoughts on what mixed use would look like. Concern number two, Montgomery Elementary is currently at 109% capacity, and a high-density project across the street will increase overcrowding. And this is located on Ashford Dunwoody, which already has significant traffic issues. Concern three, density of this project. 500 apartments and condos is an extremely high-density project, and it's the highest density project proposed yet within our city footprint. High-density projects, as you know, drain on city resources, the traffic, the school, the infrastructure. I would also like to add that our school foundation met with the developers several times to discuss if the density could be reduced, and they, they had zero interest in reducing the number of units. So, in conclusion, please deny this rezoning request, so the council and the citizens can chart our own course. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next.
Michael Rock.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, fellow citizens and voters. I ask that you reject this zoning request for the following reasons. Negative impacts to the children, students, and parents of the city, overcrowding, quality of life, and what this will teach them about proper planning. Lack of a comprehensive plan, as duly noted previously. We aren't there yet, so why should we make such a commitment? Number three, negative impacts to the property values for all the citizens. The negative impacts to the city resources, this is a new city, why would we want to tax this so greatly so soon? And again, the negative impacts to all of the citizens, that they would all have to bear this impact. This is the entrance to a city that a lot of us, including many of you on this, on this board, worked very hard for and fought very long for. Why would we take this opportunity to put such a negative impact on that city, which we all worked and wanted so much? With such negative impacts to our children, parents, all of the residents, is this the vision that we have for the city we worked so hard for? I ask you again to reject this request. It's not the vision we should have. It's not the vision that our children should have for their city either. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next.
Jay Cranman.
Mr. Cranman, how many more do we have, Daniel, on this, on the opposition?
Two more.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Jay Cranman. I live at 1103 Mill Creek Manor. I'm here to speak as a resident of the community, as a father of two students who attend Montgomery Elementary, and also as a board member of the school. I think I'll just say ditto to what Michael just said. I don't think I could be any more articulate than what he just said there, and I wish I could give my time to hear more about this comprehensive plan. So, I look forward to being part of that, and I hope you will deny this request until sometime as we have that plan in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Tim Halloran.
Tim Halloran.
Good evening, Tim Halloran, 3422 Hawcrust Drive. Been at Montgomery Elementary School for six years, have three students there, and active as president of the Montgomery Foundation, as well as on the PTA and a number of other things. It's been about three months since we first heard about this project, and I wish I could say I liked it any better today than I did three months ago. Smart growth is strategic. We can't let tactics drive our city's growth. I commend the city for kicking off this long-term strategic plan, so let's now go do this plan and figure out where the pieces will fit. Let's not add a big piece to the strategic planning group we'll have to work around. I also want to now proactively address some things that you may hear from the developer and his attorney, because I've heard this dog and pony show a few times now. First, he's consistently said in public hearings that DeKalb County has projected that the new development will result in only five new students at MES. That is blatantly false. You'll see in your notes that DeKalb County has shown, projected that there will be five new students coming from the condo portion of the development, and an additional 23 from the apartment portion. Elementary school math says that's a total of 28. We believe the number's going to be significantly higher. This is the same DeKalb County that, based on their own projections, decided to close Nancy Creek Elementary with the expectation that even with its closing, MES would never exceed 500 students. As you've heard, we now sit at 724. So, forgive me if we aren't confident in the DeKalb County School Board's projections. They also may tell you that we're holding the developer hostage and not letting them develop the land. And I'd like to flip this on its head and say, who's really being held hostage here? Is it the developer who wants you to rescue him from a bad business decision? Or is it the 724 children from Montgomery Elementary School? We've talked about overcrowded, I'm not going to go into that. But what about the 724 children who are already waiting traffic for 20-plus minutes just to get to a school that's less than two miles away? How much earlier are they going to now have to get up to go to a school on a street that will have at least 1,000 additional residents also leaving at the same time each morning? What about the children who walk to school? Be subject to even more cars to dodge and exhaust debris then. The fact of the matter here is that there is not a strategy in place to deal with any of this. So, this is a big moment for the council. It's a moment where you can decide whether you see the big picture in our strategic thinkers or are driven by short-term tactics. Here's hoping you choose the former. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halloran. Next.
Richard Matthews.
I live at 1628 Richwood Drive. I am extremely concerned and had a bad experience last Friday in that general area trying to get to the hospital, where they had a construction truck blocking the traffic for 28 minutes because he could not drive, and I can judge that because I was a trainer of drivers for 20-plus years. My biggest concern is to be ditto to everything that has been said, and I think we keep taking on projects when you have presented a very professional and paid-for comprehensive plan of action, and we do not need to circumvent that plan of action by putting a big roadblock in the middle of a major thoroughfare that's already just about beyond transition, as she's working on to get that intersection at Johnson Fair in Ashford to be improved. We sure don't need to put any more stumbling blocks on that corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for the opposition? All right. Mr. Diller, do you have any more follow-up?
You know, I've been doing this kind of work for over 40 years. When I first came to Lake Huron in the late 70s to convert a single-family detached residential neighborhood to office buildings at 40,000 square feet per acre, I heard these same arguments. They were spurious then, and they're spurious tonight, and let me tell you why. Because they don't relate to the protection of the public's health, safety, and welfare. The Georgia law does not allow you to deny zoning based on increased traffic. The Georgia law does not allow you to deny zoning based on increased school population. That is a part of the school, the tax base on which all of us participate. You can't hold a property owner, a developer, hostage because it's going to increase by less than 5% school population of a school that's already overcrowded when the school system ain't doing its job. It's not up to John Hancock and the people that own this property for the last 25 years to try to solve the issues that DeKalb County Board of Education and the DeKalb County Board of Commissioners hadn't been able to deal with. We support your comprehensive plan. This application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is consistent with the LCI study that was done by ARC. It is consistent with the other studies that have been done relative to the comparison between what is already approved on this property and what we're asking for. To come up here and try to tell you that this development is going to be a greater impact on this neighborhood than what has already been approved for is trying to mislead you. Now, why is it that we have the support of the Oak Forest neighborhood, who's the closest neighborhood to this development, and we don't have anybody else? I'm going to tell you right now, it's about price. We're not going to be held hostage by misrepresentations to you about the impact that this development's going to have on Montgomery Elementary. We're not going to do it. John Hancock is a good corporate citizen. They're willing to participate and do what they're supposed to do in this community. We are consistent with the comprehensive plan recommendations. We are consistent with the LCI. And with that, we're saying, we got 19 conditions, most of which are related to traffic. And you're going to sit here and hear somebody, we don't have any truck drivers in our apartments for the most part, somebody that said they didn't get to the hospital, I agree with that. I understand that situation. But that's not our responsibility, yet we're going to make traffic improvements, both along Ashford Dunwoody, we're going to take the perimeter CID conditions and agree to them, and we're going to improve the traffic for less density than we're already approved for. Now, how can you rationally say that we're going to have a greater impact on the community than what it's... Look, I took this property to the Supreme Court twice. This officer Velma wouldn't be there. This office of development wouldn't be there. Now, we don't want to do that anymore. We want to work with folks who want to try to make it happen. But the overall density inside 285 between Perimeter Center Parkway and Ashwood Dunnwoodie is over 5 FAR, and we're at one. It's four times greater than what we're talking about. What I'm going to ask you to do, because Chuck and his team was here tonight relative to the comprehensive plan analysis, we want to be a part of that process. And I think the best way for us to be a part of that process is to zone this property, know what it's going to be used for, know you're going to have a 10-story office building, know you're going to have 500 residential units, know, give us an opportunity of doing some mixed, true mixed use in there, rather than trying to guess at what the comp plan recommends it now, and we got a problem. I think it'd be better to go ahead and approve it, let us go forward with the comprehensive plan recommendation. We got some additional things we've got to do relative to the front side yard setbacks. We've got time, the comp plan's supposed to be done in August. Let us go ahead and get the zoning, put that in place, let us go forward with the other permit applications that we need to do while we're dealing with the comprehensive plan, and we can come to the table together. We have tried, tried to meet with those who oppose us tonight, and it's been unsuccessful. But their reasons for opposing this development are not true, and they're not real, and if we're looking at 28 units, 28 students, so it's 28 students. It's still less than 5% of the total number, it's still less than the per capita, per home that's single-family detached in the area. Why can't we still work together to try to resolve this issue as you go through this comprehensive plan process? We appreciate what you're doing, we want to be a part of it, we think it's better to go ahead and approve this application than to deny it, have us wind up in court or not do it at all, and not really know what the future should hold for this property. I have my client, Chetis Laty here with us tonight, if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug, I've got a couple of questions for you. You say that the grounds for approving or denying are always, one of these, health, safety, and welfare. Is burden on the school system and traffic and quality of life not a welfare issue?
Yeah, there's a 1961 Supreme Court decision, Mr. Mayor, Victoria Corporation that dealt with John Portman's development downtown that said, you can't deny zoning based on increased traffic, that's part of normal urban growth. Likewise, where you had an opportunity, an alternative for a school situation, I don't believe that you can turn down this zoning because we're going to generate 28 additional students. We think it's five, but be it five or 28, we don't think you can turn it down for that. And so, your job and the exercise of your legislative discretion is what's in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare. I mean, that's what y'all, that's what y'all got to do. That's a tough, a tough job. But you got to balance that against my right to use my property and the public good. And I've not heard any, I've heard some fussing about traffic, and I've heard some fussing about overcrowded schools, but that's not about what we're, what we're doing. Plus, we're willing to tackle 19, 24 conditions when you take what the PCI deals.
What about the safety conditions? Mr. Fred talked about the first guy up, the fire.
Well, you know, hopefully, hopefully, you know, we've got to, we got to deal with, we got to deal with fire, you know, and you hear about apartment fires every day. So I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's not an issue, but I think that that's something that if we're going to look at spending some extra money, if we're going to look at decreed impact fees, we've got traffic and fire and safety certainly could very well be, be one of them. And we've got time to do that. I mean, we've got a permitting process and a construction time, it's probably going to take two or three years for us to get done, so we've got the opportunity. And be quite honest about it, I'd lot rather, at this point, given the proximity there to the hospital, the martyr station, and the overall transportation, to deal with fire safety and police safety, maybe then put in some more classrooms in Montgomery.
Doug, you mentioned FAR. Explain what FAR is.
When we zone, that's, that's a floor-air ratio. When we, when we zoned the Albretton Track, which is where Perimeter Summit is today, and when we zoned the Cox Communications property, and when we zoned this property at 24, at 24 acres, and we've got a hotel, an office building, and we got another 750,000 square feet, we've got over a million square feet. So we're north of, of one point, of one FAR, which is based on 40,000 square feet per acre. That's our, that's our point. And, and I'll be honest with you, when we were, when we were litigating the Albretton case, Rebecca might remember this, we had, we offered to settle at 12,000 to 14,000 square feet per acre, that was rejected when we came back, we got a little more.
You're currently zoned for office O and I, right? Office and industrial, so there wouldn't be nothing to stop you from building another 750,000 square feet of office tomorrow, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're correct that, that what is there now complies with the DeKalb comprehensive plan. I just want to reiterate some of the points that were made by our citizens, that we, as a new city, have just launched our, we've just gotten underway with our own comprehensive plan. I would ask that, I think we need a chance as a new city to determine whether, in fact, we think it's, it ought to stay office, whether we want mixed-use development. I mean, I've read the LCI study, which recommended that it be a very robust mixed use, but that's not how it's zoned. So that's really up for our discussion now, and I think as a community, we haven't had a chance to have that discussion in terms of what we want, in terms of densities, and whether we want, you know, there's an argument to be made that offices, by doing away with some of this office space and turning it into residential, we're eroding our employment base, because those are jobs in those offices. So those are all debates that I think we need to have within our comprehensive plan discussion. This is not a long timeframe, so, can I go ahead and make a suggestion? I'd like to suggest that we defer your zoning until we, the city of Brookhaven, has a chance to develop our master plan, our comprehensive plan, that we, the citizens, have a chance to really decide what kind of densities we want and what kind of development. We know that's going to probably be pretty dense up there, that's where it's appropriate to be high density. But what kind of densities? How, you know, exactly how dense? And what mixture of apartments and office? I mean, you've come in with retail at kind of the last minute here, and we're kind of trying to shoehorn it in, because under the O and I classification, we'll have to give you a variance to literally turn the stores so that they can service the people who want to come in for a cup of coffee. I want us to have developments that we can be really proud of, that we really, that really serve our community. I think the people in this area would like to have a good mixed-use development that has stores that are close to them, that serve their neighborhoods, that they could walk up there for coffee or ice cream or whatever. But we haven't, we haven't had that chance to have that yet, and I think by only asking for a few months, I think you could come back in early September. We will have transmitted our plan by then, and, and we could renew this discussion at that time. And I, and I would encourage you to be part of these discussions, you know, of our comprehensive plan. I think we may come up with some, some new zoning categories that might even better serve you.
Do I respond?
If you'd like.
No. Well, you know, it's hard to disagree, Ms. Williams, that's very hard to disagree. All I, all I can say is that we've got a corporate citizen that's been here a long time, and we had some pretty, pretty strong statements in opposition to any kind of mixed use, particularly if it had a mix of residential tonight. So my, my feeling about it would be, it would be far better to zone it and have that zoning in place as we go forward with the comprehensive plan, and look at trying to increase ways to provide the retail that we know is a problem because it's internal in office and that kind of thing. To look at, look at how we would go forward with providing a true mixed use for this community, because I don't have a lot of faith that those who have opposed us tonight are going to come to the table looking for solutions. I think they're going to come to the table looking for a way to, to keep us from developing a residential on this property.
Mr. Dillard, it is not like you to be so negative.
Well, I, and I don't want, I don't want to be negative, I'm just reacting to what I heard.
I would hope that we would continue these discussions in a very constructive, positive way. I also think there's somebody missing at these discussions, and that's the school system.
Question.
And I've been talking to them, and I was actually hoping somebody from the Board of Education would be here tonight. It's not too late. I mean, we need to engage them to find out what their long-term plans are for the school. I mean, quite frankly, I think we ought to move the school off of Ashford Dunnwoodie Road. I think it's an inherently dangerous place to be. But we are so proud of what Montgomery Elementary has, has achieved, and we are so proud of how well they're doing that we, we certainly aren't going to kill the golden goose by, by doing something detrimental to, our, our school system is probably the most important element in our school, or in our community.
And, and the thing about, as you look at those areas of town that are doing well, they've got a good school system.
Right.
Those are the areas that are doing, so we're not, we're not about to argue about that, and we're willing to participate as corporate citizens in the fairness of quality education, that's not what it's about. But we're not going to be held hostage to the, to the school system.
Nobody is holding you hostage. We are asking you to give us a couple of months to have our own discussion as a city to figure out what's in the best interest of our citizens, our children, our, our long-term vision and plans for the city, and I don't think that's asking too much.
Doug, since we've given you some extra time, I'd like, if there's anybody from the neighborhood who wants to talk real quick in response to any of this, or, I have a question, come on up, ma'am, or either one of you.
My name is Kathleen Jakowski, I live at 1490 Ashwoodie Court. I am, have considered myself a member of the Oak Forest Hills neighborhood until just before the planning commission meeting. My home is two doors outside of the Oak Forest Hills line. I am on the corner of Camar Lake West Court and Ashwoodie Court, which is the bottom hill of the cut-through from Ashwood Dunnwoodie to Shambly Dunnwoodie. I understand that the Oak Forest Hills neighborhood was in discussions with Mr. Dillard and the developers since November. I just want you to be aware that there is no current elected board to speak on behalf of the neighborhood, there is no current neighborhood association, and I believe they're working toward that, and I appreciate that. There were no neighborhood meetings held during the time that these discussions were going on with the, in regards to an agreement with Oak Forest Hills. The first neighborhood meeting that was held was held Monday, the two days before the planning commission. I believe there's a petition that has been signed, I'm not privy to see that because I'm not in the neighborhood. I don't believe that the neighbors of Oak Forest Hills fully had an opportunity to present their questions, their concerns, and really understand.
I appreciate that. I have a particular sensitivity, I should say, or interest in folks claiming to speak for a neighborhood when there's, I've experienced that myself, when there's not really a functioning homeowner association, they can restart them and unstart them just to get the personal agenda through without, and saying they speak for the whole neighborhood. So I, I always ask for those things to be vetted, who's president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, how many beings are they held, how many members do they have, what's the percentage of makeup of the, of the association with the size of the neighborhood? So I was already looking at that, because I didn't see any other signatures on the, I know Mr. Cole, he's an honest fellow, but, and I know he has an opinion on this, but I would just take that.
I would like to say, I can't say that I agree or disagree
Right.
with the agreement that Oak Forest Hills has come to. I can only say that I, I haven't had the opportunity to see it and to understand it, and I don't feel that a lot of neighbors have.
I have a question for some of the opposition, too. You know, there's been, of course, a lot of opposition to this, but do, I just want to ask, do the people realize that there's a, there's a right to build something there, that there's going to be a development of some sort there?
In the neighborhood?
Yes, do people realize?
As, as, my understanding, yes.
Right.
The people that I've talked to absolutely understand, yes, something's going to go there. And in my conversations, again, I'm not elected to speak on behalf of anybody, in my conversations with people in the neighborhood, and I have no percentage as to how many I've talked to, we all know something's going to go there.
Right.
I just ask that the neighborhood be, be involved, have the opportunity to ask questions and to understand. It's nice to, that the developers were willing to work with the neighborhood and to offer us, you know, an opportunity, a monetary opportunity to help offset any traffic we may have, but we don't have a treasurer. How does that even work? I, I don't know.
Where does the money go?
I don't, I don't know.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yes?
Jay Kranman again. I'm new at this, but when I was at the zoning commission meeting, the chair of the zoning committee at that time made a recommendation to reduce the number of units to 231 as part of the, when the motion was taking part. I think there was some math that he had done on the back of the envelope to determine the total square footage of the current approved development versus what the new development would be. I have not done that math, but I do want to say that at those kind of unit numbers, we would be really excited. Personally, I would say, I'm not speaking on behalf of anyone other than my family, I think we'd be really excited as a, as a member of that community to talk about a development of that size. So I would encourage you maybe to look at those numbers and see if that, if that makes any sense.
That'd be the, the famous mathematician Stan Siegel.
Yeah.
Who, who, who on his own.
There he is, Mr. Siegel, thank you.
Who on his own was able to figure out host offset with mileage rate implication. He knew how to do that somehow, so.
I'd like to just offer one comment to Councilwoman Williams. I, I really think that we have an opportunity here, and, and dual-use zoning has its inherent problems, and we have a few things to work out. There's clearly considerations to make with public safety that we don't understand comprehensively yet. Taking time, getting this into a discussion, looking at this from a broader perspective, there's opportunities to do lots of good things. And let me just share this with you as a comment. I have some rental units in Sonoma Villa, or Villa Sonoma. One of my renters chooses to rent there to go to Montgomery, so, so it's, it's a very popular.
Right.
Thank you.
You know, that's, that's part of the problem, is that, yeah, Montgomery has become such a jewel of the school that it's attracting people, and I hear this from real estate agents all the time, that, that it's made, and we all like that if we're selling a house or we like to see our housing values go up, but if you build it, they will come. And so, even if nothing goes up in addition to Perimeter Summit, there's so much new housing going up and rebuilding going on in District 1, that short of building a boat around the school, it's going to grow. So we've got to get a handle on this growth at the school and manage it and try to maintain the high quality that you all have achieved and, and do what's best for everybody. But all I'm really asking is that we slow down the process a little bit so that we can really be more thoughtful about this.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Lisa Ladish, and I am a parent of two boys at Montgomery Elementary. I also just helped launch a run club there, so it's really exciting with, with actually Elizabeth Wordersheim. And we're running around the neighborhoods, it's awesome. And I just really wanted to say, first, I'm in support of taking some time to really explore this. I appreciated everything that you said, Councilman, Councilwoman Williams, it was smart, intelligent, common sense, you cannot argue with a lawyer, I found they're very good. I sat there going, wait a minute, um, yeah, that, I understand.
He had you won over, didn't he?
He did, almost. You know, I appreciate that, that the client has a right and a right to his property, and that the reason that we are here is because they're asking for a variance, and there's a reason they're asking for something that.
A rezoning.
A rezoning, I'm sorry. But I just wanted to say, I appreciate taking a little bit of time. Obviously, the comprehensive plan seems exciting, Brookhaven's amazing, amazing, and I think just taking a little bit more time to explore, it just, common sense.
Thank you.
We're going to continue to work on sidewalks around Montgomery, too.
Thank you.
You can, you can run.
You can, you can run faster than you can, than you can go in a car right there.
Daniel, how much extra time have we given the opposition?
Four minutes and 15 seconds.
All right, how much extra time would you give Mr. Dillard?
One gentleman spoke for 50 seconds in support. I think we'll leave it up to this candidate.
I just want to give everybody an opportunity to speak, and I want to make sure that everybody has equal time. Yes, Tom?
Um, I think given the, I guess, additional comments opposing it, perhaps it would be appropriate to ask Mr. Dillard if he'd like further rebuttal.
Yeah, would you like further rebuttal?
Maybe Mr. Dillard's client.
Or his, or your client?
You ask the lawyer to get up and talk. Give me a break, give me a break. Look, we tried to meet with the neighborhood, we got one neighborhood, and maybe the Coles didn't have the authority, whatever the situation is. Concern I got is we're going to defer this thing until September. We're still not going to have a comp plan. And, and we've got a corporate citizen that's got a market that's moving on them, and we know we got opposition. We have tried to meet with the school, we've tried to meet with Nancy Heights. We were not able to reach a court agreement with them. I don't have a lot of faith that we're going to be able to do it. Y'all know me, I'm.
Can I, can I order y'all to meet some more?
Yeah, I can, I'll meet, I'll meet when the cows come home, as long as the clients will pay me for it. The problem, the problem I got, the problem I got, the problem I got is, is that we've met pretty hard so far, and we hadn't gotten very far. I got one out of three. And we can go talk about the comprehensive plan, I don't want to get, I've been in these comprehensive plan meetings, and I, y'all selected a great, a great group in Jacobs tonight. I know Chuck and his group very well. We're going to get in there, and we're going to duke it out over a residential. We're going to duke it out over a residential, and, and I'm just saying, I think you're better off to say, look, we think that this, this project, because of traffic impact, the FAR, and all the things that we've given you, the 19 conditions that will go away if we don't get it done, somebody else is going to have to pay for them. I think you're better off to have us come to the table with that in place and talk about how we do improve retail, how we do modify the office conditions, and look at all the rest of that inside Lake Huron property that's in the city of Brookhaven to come up with a plan that deals with transportation issues, that deals with access to MARTA, that deals with trying to create a pedestrian-oriented friendly community. But we're at your discretion. We're a corporate citizen, we're not going to be irresponsible. I'm not going to tell you whether or not if you defer this, it'll, it won't be withdrawn. I don't know, and that might be what these folks want to hear. But, but I don't think that's the real answer, that, I don't think that's the direction we ought to go.
Mr. Dillard, I have a question for you, please.
Yes.
Could you clarify for myself and maybe for the folks out here, your understanding of the de cab comprehensive plan? I think it's now at 750,000 square feet for this property, OI, and your comment being that the impact of it under the de cab is no more than what it'd be, what it would be if this, this program went through?
It's consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan of De Cab County, and it is consistent with LCI that was approved by ARC, and it is also consistent with the recommendations of the primary CID. The prob, the problem with it is, is that it incorporates uses that really don't allow you to do what you want to do, and I appreciate what Ms. Williams is saying because she's exactly right. The retail under the ONI classification under the cab ordinance and yours has got to be internally related to the tenants that are in the building. Well, that, that's, that's not what we're showing. You know, we're showing an external retail situation. The, the other thing is that there's not a, there's not a relationship to the square footage of office residential and retail. In other words, taking into consideration what's in the Lake Huron area, taking into consideration the single-family detached that is still close by, how much retail could you really have to keep folks from having to go across the road to a perimeter center? So I think that those are the kind of issues that I would hope you would deal with as far as your comprehensive plan in order to develop a mixed use that's really not permitted right now while the comprehensive plan says it is permitted, the zoning ordinances don't let you do it. And that's why we were going to have to come back in with these variance requests. So, so I think as long as we've got some collective unity about the perspective and the work product that we want to try to create, Joe, I, I just, I, I, I'm just very concerned that, that, that my client, a corporate citizen that's up in Massachusetts, is really not going to be at the table. I mean, we can, we can talk about what we need and what we want to do, but the folks are going to really control the process of the residents out there, and we really won't be heard. And that's my, that's my real concern about it. So I'm, that's why I'm saying, go ahead and approve it tonight, put it on the table so that everybody's got to, got to deal with it.
Thank you.
Doug, I think, as you know, all of us are firm believers in, in property rights and respect that.
Right.
And we fully understand that you're, that John Hancock owns this property and has a right, and he has a vested right to the zoning that already exists on this land. I mean, he could build, is it correct, a 17, 18-story building tomorrow without asking us for permission. And I believe there's at least another, what, four or five high-rises zoned in Perimeter Summit. So what, what needs, what everybody needs to be clear is that Perimeter Summit is going to be the place for high density. That's probably not going to change because there are vested land rights of zoning that exist today that we can't change or nor our comprehensive plan, plan will change. They, they could build another four or five high-rises tomorrow without asking permission because that's a legacy that De Cab County left us. But.
And don't forget the Cox property that's got a million square feet and a 375-room hotel on it.
Well, exactly. So, and, and I think Boyle's has some property, too, that allows a hotel.
Well, that's, in addition to that, I think you've got.
So, don't, don't be surprised when high density comes down the road for that. But they haven't, they could have built that 10 years ago, and they haven't, because they're also, you know, they're driven by market forces, too. If there was a market for another couple of million square feet of office building, they would have built it yesterday, and they haven't. So, you know, that will drive development as well. If all of a sudden now they're saying there's this market of multifamily, well, maybe there is. You know, I, I'm not sure. We're, we're putting up multifamily, we, we already have 66 apartments.
Complexes.
Complexes in Brookhaven. And we're trying to get a handle on, how many is too much? You know, is that enough? They're, they're dispersed in all different parts of the city, and in fact, they're concentrated down in District Four, but there's plenty of them in District One, and we need to get a handle on, you know, how much multifamily is a good mix for us as residents. So I hope those are all the debates that we're going to be having, positive debates, collegial debates within our comprehensive plan. And I hope you and your client will be involved in them.
Well, we want to be.
Because we respect you as a property owner.
We, 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 we are a part of the community.
Okay.
We can't deny that.
Well, then come to the table.
Exactly.
So I'll leave it, I'll leave it up to you. The only thing I will say is that the type of residential that we're going to build is not the type of residential that multifamily that historically has been built in Brookhaven.
Well, I appreciate that, Doug, and it's, you know, people get emotional when they think about their children in school and traffic and the safety when it comes to that, and how their, how their quality of life is going to be affected. Our job, of course, is to balance those interests. You know, my wife is a teacher at Kishirick Magnet School, and, you know, they, that's, Rebecca brought up, you know, moving Montgomery off of Ashford Dunwoodie. That's, you know, and you brought up a valid reasons about De Cab County school system being, you know, you don't want to carry the water from De Cab County or be burdened with what their problems are. You mentioned that at the Montgomery Elementary meeting that I was at, that, that people needed contact their school board. We don't get much, we're starting to get some more reaction from them, but I just want to make sure that we balance property rights and quality of life rights. And quality of life does involve education. It does involve the welfare of people, it does involve, you know, traffic safety and the, and the amount of time you sit in traffic. And, you know, I want to make sure that we are listening to our residents, and I echo Rebecca's comments about apartments and the, and other things she said, of course, but just please commit that you will not cut off debate. You will be as cordial as I know you can be with these folks, because I know many of them, they're good people, they just want what's best for their community. And if you've gotten to them to, which I've asked them before in that Montgomery hearing, to accept that there's going to be a development there, that it's not going to be green space, I mean, you know that's half the battle for you sometimes. If, if they say that it's not going to be a park, they'll agree to that, then you've, you're halfway there. So please make sure.
Well, Mr. Mayor, you've known me long enough to know that if there's a compromise that can be achieved, that's what I want to do. I'm going to tell you right now, tonight, as I stand here, I do not have authority to agree to a deferral.
Okay.
But these are good corporate folks.
Thank you.
I think they'll do their part.
I appreciate it. All right. Have we given, do we need to give more to the residents?
Uh, no, sir.
You sure? You sure we got exact, all right. All right, is it, is anybody else who wants to speak? No, he's already spoken, he can't speak again. No, 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 you can't speak again. If, if somebody who hasn't spoken who wants to say something, I would entertain that for one minute. Anybody who hasn't spoken want to speak? All right, good, then we'll close the public hearing on that. All right, there are three. Is that right? Four?
Three.
Three? Do we need to take them individually? Do we, or do we address this one first? Maureen?
We're discussing that you could take all three, but you need to name individually the, the case numbers.
And the motion? Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
All right, I'm going to move that we defer RZ.
Okay.
I'm going to move that we defer this rezoning until our first meeting in September to reconsider this case with hopes that we will take into account the, the results of our comprehensive plan.
All right.
And I want to include ours. Until, you want to set a date certain? September 13th, I believe, is the, is the date. But let me go ahead and list the, the, these zonings are RZ.
You're looking at September the 9th or September the?
23rd.
The 23rd.
All right, let's, let's make it September 23rd, just, just because I think we'll have more information for sure by then. But I'm going to move then that we defer RZ 13-11, SLOP 13-01, and SLOP 13-02. Can I also add the ordinances?
Yes. Just the numbers.
ORD 2014-01-01, ORD 2014-01-02, and ORD 2014-01-03.
So there's a motion, there's a motion to defer those items. You second it?
I second it.
Any discussion?
You want to put your friendly update in there mandating that they continue communication?
Yes. Yes.
Just as a, just as a comment.
Wish I could mediate the discussions. Could I?
There's nothing that goes through faster in council than when all parties are.
Just as a comment, I'd like to say that, you know, this, I'm extremely happy to see the amount of school support from Montgomery Elementary. It's a fantastic discussion. Those who don't know me know that I'm extremely passionate about improving school education in De Cab County and particularly in Brookhaven. You know, having a lot of demand for your school is actually a good problem to have, opens up opportunities for even discussions like independent charter schools. But in addition to.
Which is a, which is a topic for another day, but yes.
In addition to that. In addition to that, now, I think that this is a, this is a fairly good development of mixed-use development. I think Brookhaven would support mixed-use developments in an area like this, and I hope that the dialogue continues. But as a new city, it's extremely important for us to listen to our citizens and get citizen input. This is the largest development that's been put forward to the city of Brookhaven yet, and so this gives us the opportunity to show that we really do have local control, so.
Yes, I think this is the first apartment development we've considered. Is that correct?
Of this size, correct.
You know, just as a quick comment, Bates and I are co-chairing the economic development for, for Brookhaven, and every meeting we've gone to, we've pioneered the concept that the, the De Cab County School Board needs to be involved in when we have our conversations on economic development, because you cannot separate the school from economic development. They need to be present when these situations are happening, and I'm, I'm glad that you tried to contact them, Rebecca, for coming to be a part of this night. I think we're going to have to make more of an effort to make sure they're a part of this, so we get a good answer to some of these situations.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor of the deferral signifies someone saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The item is deferred. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, a five-minute recess, and we'll be back. All right. Everybody take their seats, please. All right, number three. SLOP 1401, Mohammed Khadir. Mohammed Khadir, request to locate a late-night establishment within the 1,500 feet of residentially zoned property at 33, 3337 Beaufort Highway, number 340. Open the public hearing.
As stated, Mayor and Council, this is SLOP 1401. As the mayor indicated the particulars, this is a request by Mohammed Khadir to open a late-night establishment within 1,500 feet of residentially zoned property at 3337 Beaufort Highway. The staff stipulates to the staff report and notes that this property is in the Northeast Plaza Shopping Center. The site contains 41.182 acres, and the applicant is proposing to utilize, actually, an existing tenant space in the shopping center, and we have recommended approval subject to several conditions, and I believe the applicant is here tonight along with additional information that you received electronically yesterday, and you have an additional handout from the applicant up on your, on your dais with additional conditions that they, I believe they would like to propose to you tonight. So if, unless you have any questions for staff, I'd like to stipulate to the report and allow time for a public comment.
Please, we'll stipulate.
Thank you.
May I have a copy?
There should, I have an extra one. I think there, is there not one up there?
I'm sorry, thank you, it's very.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Hakeem Hilliard. I'm with the Hilliard Firm here this evening on behalf of Mohammed Khadir in this application for a special land use permit from the regulations of the city of Brookhaven zoning ordinance. I'm excited to be here.
It's your first time here.
It's my first time here, I'm very excited to be here.
Okay, time's up.
See you all.
That's what we do, the first timers.
Yeah, that's a tough one. I wanted to talk a little bit about this request. My firm was recently engaged, since the applicant appeared before the Planning and Zoning Commission, we did have the opportunity to review the, the hearing online, which is the first for me, and that was very, very helpful, to hear the concerns that were presented from the folks that were presenting the concerns. So what we did was, we took the opportunity to kind of go through the concerns, and I think it would be helpful to kind of go through some details about how this use is planned to operate, and then give you the list of proposed conditions that we've developed. And then hopefully, with those two presentations, we will be responsive to some of the concerns that have been presented. That's our hope. So I wanted to first talk a little bit about the use. The, the use for the special land use permit, I understand, is triggered because of the proximity of the apartment complex, which is located by 843 feet away from where this space is located. And it's located in Northeast Plaza. The proposal is to do a full-service restaurant. One thing that's a little bit inconsistent with what's in the staff report is that it'll be a full-service restaurant until midnight, and then after that, it's solely a lounge. The proposal for the applicant is that food service will continue for the entire time that the business is open for service. So it is primarily a restaurant. The lounge portion of it is, there'll be hookah, which is a popular thing in the late-night industry now, but food service will continue for the entire day, for the entire evening. There's no fee associated with entering the establishment. They don't intend to have any lines outside, allow people in the maximum capacity for the space. It's 108 people. There's no dance floor associated with this. There's no dance floor associated with this. This is not a nightclub. We want to make it clear in describing the details of how it's gonna operate, that it's not a nightclub. It does not intend to be a nightclub. It is really an alternative place for folks to go that don't want to go to a nightclub and don't like that environment. So that's the plan. There will be a DJ associated with the business. And I wanted to talk about that a little bit because I represent a lot of more traditional nightclub establishments in the metro area. And I can tell you that a DJ is very important to how the establishment operates. The DJ controls how the people behave based on the sound of the music and the music that's played. The plan here is to play low-volume music that kind of complements the environment and creates a mood for the space. Not unlike many restaurants that you may have been to, there's a, one that I think of, STK in Midtown Atlanta, that has a DJ associated with the establishment there. There's no dancing there, but it certainly creates an atmosphere for folks to come there. I previously represented a, a well-known entertainer rapper who opened a restaurant in Midtown Atlanta called Straits. We went through the neighborhood process, and at the end, he said, "I want to add a DJ to this use." I said, "Well, no, you're gonna make everybody panic. They're already nervous that you're a rapper trying to open up a restaurant." And he says, "Well, no, this is really just to create a mood for the customers that come in." And he opened up the restaurant. He put a DJ that was spinning records in the club, I mean, in the, in the restaurant. But there was no dancing. It was very calm. People would come there, usually from going to dinner and other places for a drink and to socialize. But it was a very calm and, and just a different kind of environment. About 40 pounds ago, it's a kind of establishment that I probably would have gone to myself at the end of the evening.
Me too, me too.
Now, I prefer live entertainment venues, but I, I envision this to be more like the Ritz-Carlton where there's a live band, but people aren't, you know, you know, in line to get in. So that's really the plan. There's, uh, some other examples, Hobnob, Tavern in Ansley Mall is the same way. There's several establishments, Two Urban Licks that sometimes have a DJ that play associated with the restaurant. So that's the plan here. We heard so many concerns from looking at the tape, and I wanted just to propose some conditions that we would like to offer, that we think that respond, to, to hopefully respond to some of the concerns that were raised. And I just want to go through the list quickly because while we've presented it to you, we have not presented them to the, to the residents who had spoken previously in opposition. The first condition is at all times during the business hours, the restaurant shall maintain a full-service menu. That's important to, for everyone to understand, that there are a lot of customers that are come there. For the full time it's gonna be open, you can get food all the time. And it's, and we've attached the menu to your letter, so you can see it's a full menu. It's not just a bar menu. The second condition, which is something that's always been helpful for previous establishments to stay open late that I represented, is if there's a name and a contact number and an email for one person that will be solely responsible for responding to any concerns that come up at any hour that the business is open. And that we will make that number available to anybody that wants it. We'll post it on the property, and we'll also make it available to the City of Brookhaven Police Department. If somebody calls the police department about any type of issue before they call the establishment, the police department will know one person to call that will always be available. Number three, the applicant shall maintain the services of an off-duty police officer. We hope it could be the City of Brookhaven Police Department officer, if the policies here allow that, whose responsibility would be to patrol the exterior of the establishment in all areas where the customers may park or pass at the times the business is open after 12 o'clock. So at 12 o'clock, we'll employ an off-duty officer to be outside of the establishment. Interestingly enough, that's an important issue for Mr. Kadir as well, because there's a, as you know, there's a big establishment in that parking lot already, and he's as concerned about the impact of that establishment on his customers as some of the neighbors might be about Mr. Kadir's establishment. So this officer is intended to respond to that. And we're, as a condition of zoning, we will make sure that that officer is employed at all times, um, in uniform after 12 o'clock while the establishment is open. Number four, the establishment shall not include a dance floor. We've said that, but we think that's significant in the type of folks that are attracted to the, the business. Number five, prior to initiating any operations of the business, the applicant shall engage the services of a certified sound engineer, and in concert with the City of Brookhaven Police Department, develop a reasonable maximum sound level for the establishment. This, this limit shall be, not be exceeded at any time. And we can include neighbors in that process if they want to be there, because there's no intention of having loud music that destroys neighbors. Even though we know that the closest neighbor is pretty far away, we want them to be comfortable that everybody agrees on what that level is, and there's not gonna be any opportunity to go beyond that. Number six, during the first year, and this is something that we've proposed, during the first year that the SLUP is in place, because Mr. Kadir has asked for a SLUP for five years. And at that, end of that five years, he's not gonna ask for an extension. He, he does not want to operate more than five years. And he's willing to come back to the city council or some, the planning commission, or to the neighborhood, whoever, or the planning department, whoever you designate, a couple of times during the first year, to talk about the operation, to respond to any concerns, and whether they're complying with the conditions that have been proposed. We proposed doing that a couple of times in the first year, and then one time each additional year during the term of the SLUP. Again, number seven, there's no fee for entry to the establishment. Number eight, that we shall never exceed the maximum permitted building occupancy. This, if you look at the floor plan that's included with the letter, there's 108, uh, 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 opportunity for 108 people to be seated. So there's not, there shouldn't be standing room only in this establishment. Number nine, the applicant shall not advertise the establishment as a nightclub in any periodicals or anywhere else. And number 10, the special land use permit shall not be transferable. I know that's a condition that you all proposed. We ask you that you accept the recommendation of the, the department with one caveat, the, the proposal that the restriction be to 2 a.m. We hope that these conditions that we've proposed will allow us to, to allow the business to stay open for, with the same hours that other late-night establishments in the area are allowed to, so that they would not be restricted to the 2 a. limit, 2 a.m. limit. But that is our presentation. We're available for any questions. Otherwise, we'd like to save our remaining time for rebuttal.
I wasn't not paying attention. I was going through my phone, because I went, I went to a Greek restaurant, maybe it was in Buckhead or somewhere, not too long ago, and they had some, a DJ and a hookah.
Yes.
Similar, I'm not sure if that's exactly what the, what he's proposing, but it was a, there was a little Greek dancing, though.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any comments and support of this application?
Yes, Mr. Lee, please.
Say that again.
Lee, please.
Good morning. I'm, I'm sorry, I said good morning. Good afternoon, good evening, mayors and city council. My name is Leake. In fact, I used to be a resident of the new city of Brookhaven, but way back, it used to be part of DeKalb County and before the highway. That was my first place that I used to live. Anyway, the reason I'm here is, in behalf of Ethiopian American Business Association, we have an organization that supports city, county.
Can you come a little closer to the microphone and maybe a little bit?
I'm here representing Ethiopian American Business Association.
The Ethiopian?
American Business Association. This is a nonprofit organization.
Not the Eritrean or the Djibouti.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, Ethiopian. In fact, I have some paperwork I'll give to you. We've been very instrumental trying to bridge the gap between the city, the county, to breed a good citizen, responsible taxpayers, and through educational process. I know, probably I see quite a few of you attending, but we are engaged in DeKalb County mainly. We're trying to educate the immigrant community, because DeKalb County is one of the diverse community, county. So today, I'm here because we encourage people that to, you know, have business and also good taxpayers. And in fact, for this new city, it will be a good tax-based ribbon. And also, he's gonna be hiring some, quite a few people. So he's gonna create a job. So in that area, general facility that he's gonna be locating this business, I think is, if you guys approve it, I mean, it will be a very productive citizen. And thank you.
All right.
May I give this?
Do you happen to know how many Ethiopians live, Ethiopian Americans live in DeKalb County, roughly?
That's a very good question. The last time that it was census was done with assistance of some kind of net profit origin in Atlanta with Ethiopian community. Then, that was like about, if my recollection is right, about 10 years ago, it was like 30,000 plus. So, I mean, now is the number is at the speed of the light. You know, it's increasing more.
Speed of the light.
Yes. And of course, you know, and this is what all about America. It's a land of equal opportunity and a place to, I mean, I was talking with my class, my colleagues, Eric sitting there, where you guys was debating about this new business they're trying to establish. I say, "I wish if I can take it back home and they can see live how people discussing, engaging," you know? And we are proud of being here, and we're trying to create, breed a productive citizen. And that's why I'm trying to support this gentleman or any other. He probably see me more, you know, as we have some more people, you know, trying to open some business around DeKalb County.
Thank you. Mr. Khalid, was it Khalid? What was his last name? What was your last name?
My last name is Malede, M-A-L-E-D-E. My first name is L-E-A-K, Leake.
Leake Malede.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Next. Is anybody here to speak in opposition to this application? Daniel? Ladies first. Jeanette Early? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My mother is 92, so these meetings are very long. She did attend the Planning Commission April 2nd, but it was a little bit too long for her to come tonight. But she wanted me to come and speak on her behalf. She's a long-term Brookhaven resident. She and my dad came out to this area in 1948. And she is the yellow square in the upper left-hand corner. 2079 is her residence. And she opposes the late-night hours. She just feels like that that's not good for the community. She's supportive of the, the Brookhaven and the incentives that have been going on to, to make this a good community area. And she, as well as, as some of her church friends are elderly residents, and they just want to be sure that the area is kept safe for them as they remain in their homes. Many of them are her age and older. And the late-night hours is the, is her concern. And she just wanted me to come and speak on her behalf.
Thank you, Ms. Early.
And my name is, my maiden name is Early, but my married name is Kamin. K-A-M-I-N, Jeanette.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next.
Hi, I'm Pat Thomas, and I'm a District 2 Community Council member. I've been on the council for several years. And I came here, I live in Shamlee now, got annexed to Shamlee, so I'm not a Brookhaven resident. But I was asked to come here and tell you all what I know about this owner that's applying for this SLUP. He has a nightclub. He calls it a restaurant, but it's a nightclub that is on Beaufort Highway and Crossroads Shopping Center. And it backs up to a section of Wakefield Forest subdivision. Those residents never get any rest. And they had, when they applied, there was no community meeting or anything. They just suddenly, they were there. They recently applied for a 4 a.m. closing, another SLUP. It was denied because the residents found out about it, and they were in opposition, went to all the meetings, the community council, the planning commission, and the county. Um, there is still, last week, we were still getting complaints about this. People call me.
What kind of complaints are they?
Noise, bass vibrations that go through the whole house, people's houses. Um.
How close is this establishment in relation to?
Closest residence is 112 feet. And then the, the rest of that part of the subdivision spreads out from there. And, but I've had, I live on the other end of the subdivision. And I've had people email me and call me about it that live in the middle of the subdivision. So it's not just the, the people that are very near there.
So what courts of action is normally taken by those folks when they get those kind of complaints?
They call me. And I've, I've, I've gone out at 3:30 in the morning to these places to see what's going on, because I don't just call something in because on somebody's word. And I get there, and I call DeKalb County Police, or I call code enforcement, whoever I can get a hold of, to get out there. And that takes a couple of hours going through all of that, because, um, they don't have any measurement, anything to measure it. But they'll, they'll listen themselves and walk around in the house and try to see what they're hearing or feeling or whatever. And sometimes, the club that I'm talking about is Call the Lions. And it was the Ultra Lounge until people started calling them on it, because they say they're a restaurant. And they changed the name and took all that down. But they've gotten citations and citations and citations. And we, the residents will go to court. And Mr. Kadir will not come. And his lawyer, who usually was John Thomas, would say, would ask for continuance. And so it got to the point where you have to keep going back and back and back for the same thing. And it was just useless, you know?
Before you continue, Daniel, how many more people are in opposition to this?
Two more.
Okay. Just want to make sure that people, other people have a chance to speak. You've got five minutes left in the whole amount.
The complaints, citations. There's another nightclub, a large, very large nightclub in this shopping center. So that kind of goes against the SLUP provision that concentrating the same kind of this, this, this business, these businesses together. Um, like I said, the second SLUP was turned down, and people just, people have inquired of the commissioners of how we can go about getting their licenses and whatever revoked and putting them out of business, because it's just that bad.
Thank you very much. Next, Daniel?
Richard Matthews.
Matthew's. You live sort of near there, I think, don't you? You live relatively close to this place, don't you?
Just a few miles from. And there's been situations that vibrate my house. And I've had DeKalb County out and so forth. But to me, it seems like this request is putting the cart before the horse until the city makes a decision about late-night establishments, operating hours and so forth. How in the world can you even consider an application to put in a business? From having a former retail business to say you're gonna build in a business, and you only want to operate it for five years, that right there is a major flag. You just don't do that. There's something behind that. But if we're not careful as the city of Brookhaven in general, we're gonna become the next Buckhead mess that everybody in this room is old enough to remember. Because we're the ones that are open late, we're getting all the traffic to it. I bowl with a man who plays in clubs like this, or restaurants like this. And you don't want to know what he'll tell you that goes on in those establishments, especially after midnight. For him to say he needs a policeman on spot starting at midnight is another major flag. That means you've got a different crowd. What's your protection from the people from dark till midnight? It just doesn't make sense. But my biggest issue is that nothing needs to be put close to a residential that's gonna stay open late. It just absolutely cannot be absorbed without being built from scratch like a Wells Fargo Armored Express building. Then you can have a nightclub in there, or a restaurant with, with a DJ. To close, I think we need to remember Kaleidoscope in Dresden Village. Exactly what they did will be what happens here. It'll grow outside of the walls and be on a patio if we're not careful. And then one thing leads to another.
Thank you. Next.
Bonnie Chauvin.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Chauvin, and I'm here representing the Autozone, which is located in the top picture there. It's kind of a cutoff.
We pull the microphone up, please.
Sorry.
Okay.
Anyway, we are business owners. We own the Autozone property located in the top of the diagram there. And we strongly oppose this application and hope that you will support the community. Just to piggyback onto what was mentioned earlier about the Lion Restaurant and Lounge, we heard some comments from some, an individual with the Ashford Park Neighborhood Watch, who also expressed concern with this lounge that stays open late under the guise of being a restaurant. This, the volume of the music is just something that, that the residents are upset with. In line with the noise problems, I did some research, and there's a website called See Click Fix, which the Brookhaven City appears to have access to. And just this month, there have been two complaints with regard to the Atlanta Peach Ballroom. I'm not sure if this is the exact space that they are looking at, but it's, if it's not the exact thing that's adjacent.
Atlanta Peach is a little further out.
But it's on the same property.
Yes, yes, it is.
Two complaints have been put into this website, and they were acknowledged. Apparently, the police department was contacted, and nothing has changed. And there is, someone writing was talking about their four-month-old baby that, you know. that, you know, they could hear this. And I understand that they've mentioned having a contact phone number all hours of the night. Well, when you have a four-month-old baby, that's an eternity to wait for somebody to actually do something. So it's a tremendous concern. There are many residents in that area. I know that we received a letter because we're property owners. A lot of folks in this area, which is highly, highly residential, every corner of this property has apartments. I'm not sure that they know what is being planned in this area, because they're not property owners. They're renters. I understand that the zoning signs, I saw them, were posted. But they do tend to get mixed in with the Pizza Hut signs. And I mean, it's just very confusing. Our biggest concern also is the safety of the area. When you have a late-night establishment, people leave the bars at 2:30 somewhere else in different jurisdictions, come over to Brookhaven until 4:00 in the morning. That street, Buford Highway, we know is extremely dangerous. The crime in the area is excessive. Just in this year, from January 1st till now, there were 200 different types of crimes, not in Brookhaven, but in a two-mile radius of this property. 200 different vandalism, burglary, car theft. I mean, it's 200. So the police department, I have no doubt, is doing all they can. They've set up a satellite station in an apartment. I know that they've done what they can. I think it's a drain on the resources of Brookhaven. The entire community is going to be negatively impacted, while there is a small handful of individuals that I see benefiting from this, as opposed to an entire community. And there's an elementary school, and there's a high school, very close to the vicinity as well. I don't see any reason why this should be committed to for five years, especially a lot of the things that you mentioned earlier with the previous zoning question. Why does this have to be agreed to now for five years when Brookhaven is in its infancy? It's a new city. You haven't heard from the residents. And this is a commitment, a five-year commitment. I see nothing good coming from it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the opposition?
No, sir.
All right. Hakeem, if you want to come back up, you can have-
Would you add another minute to this proposal, please?
Minute and a half, yes.
Thank you very much. Very briefly, I just wanted to respond to some of the comments. I think some of this, and they're very valid concerns that have been raised, Mr. Kadir has not been involved with the other establishment that they're talking about for, I think, 18 months. He's no longer associated. For anything that's happened in that period of time, he has not been associated with that. He acknowledges that there have been noise complaints on occasion. And he was so concerned about it that he filed an open records request for the 911 calls. And he discovered that it was one person that made every single noise complaint. He hired a sound engineer at that time that measured the sound. That's why when he had to go to court on those cases, they were always all dismissed. He's never been cited and held responsible for any noise violations at his property. One of the reasons we're proposing to handle this in advance, because as a neighbor, you don't have to deal with these kind of issues where you have to police somebody after they're open for business. So we're proposing getting the sound engineer to get with the city of Brookhaven Police Officer, or Police Department, and any neighborhood representatives that want to be a part of it, and agree on what is allowed, is too loud. And he'll agree on that, and we'll move forward with that as the condition. The comment about the five years, the real reason that he proposed five years to his SLUP is, that's really, for a very successful establishment like this, is really a lifespan. But he also said to me when we met, was that he understands that Brookhaven is a new city, and that there's some changes proposed for this area of Buford Highway. He understands that this plaza is probably a part of that. And he thought it was a good time period to gain support for that type of request. He did have a special land use permit at the other location that was approved. What he had done was attempted, just before he was no longer associated with the business, to extend the hours from 2:00 AM to 3:00 AM. That's what was denied. But the use permit continued. The business is still there, never been cited, or never been held responsible for any noise violations during Mr. Kadir's association with the business. We feel like we've presented some conditions that are responsive to the concerns that have been presented. Unfortunately, we haven't had the opportunity to make everyone feel comfortable one-on-one. But we did send out letters to the neighborhood associations that the young lady mentioned. There were nine different community associations that we sent certified letters to, to notify them about this application and request of meeting. And there was no response. So, and we've got evidence of that, if that's of interest to you. But we made an effort, and we hope that you would support this request, without the condition for the 2:00 AM restriction. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I believe Mr. Kadir had an analysis done of the distance to every one of the residential properties. Do you have that map? Do we have that access data available?
Yeah, the closest single-family home was actually, single-family residents were a little more than 1,600 feet away.
1,600?
1,600 feet. The, we understand that the residential property that is triggering the need for a special land use permit is the apartment complex, which is about 843 feet away from his business. Now, this is, you know, we're in a large shopping center. And if I could about this-
Are you measuring from the edge of the property, or from the, from his suite?
Measuring from, we're measuring from his suite, yes. Yeah, from the edge of the property. And I, and we do have a survey, because this is the 300, approximately 350 feet from the edge of the property for the entire shopping center plaza. And we hope that the security issues, I mean, the reason we're putting a security officer out there, there's several businesses that are located in plazas where there's other businesses, and you want to make the business attractive for your customers. We certainly don't want his customers to be discouraged because of this large nightclub that's there that discourage customers from coming to his business. So it's really about safety and security. So we hope that the safety and security issues that have been presented would be helped by the presence of this officer, that anytime they see any violation of law or any crime being committed, they wouldn't have to stay at his business. They would enforce the law. So it's actually an extra full-time law enforcement officer in the evening hours. At times when the neighbors are presented, there's a big challenge in the area already. So we hope that that would be a positive and not a negative.
One other question for you. You identified the condition that you proposed, that the sound, I believe the sound study would, would, let me see, which, which number is that?
That is number, uh-
Five, I'm sorry. Yeah. Prior to initiating operation, operation of the business, applicant shall engage the services of certified sound engineer and concert with the city of Brookhaven Police Department, develop a reasonable maximum sound level for the establishment. Is there any way we can define what that reasonable sound level is? I mean, basically, we want to make sure it doesn't affect the residences that are closest to this property. So I'd prefer that condition to actually define that it would not be heard by the closest property, you know, residential property on it.
I think that would be the goal, that we can say that. We absolutely say that. You know, what I was thinking was if the police department representative were there with the engineer and with the applicant, and maybe a neighborhood representative who's closest to the property, they can have a conversation about it. He's going to agree, Mr. Kadir's going to agree, because he doesn't want it to project beyond his business.
Is there any soundproofing he's going to do or is done at all?
Soundproofing of the business? Yeah, he, he's, he will do it if necessary, yeah. He is, yeah.
Is it one of the conditions?
Susan?
Not soundproofing.
Is that a city condition? And any soundproofing?
On page 120.
But while, while you're thinking about that, Chief, I'd like to ask you a question about, is there, is there an ability to just have a two-hour shift for hired officers?
They can't step inside the club, I think is the policy, right?
It's only security outside the club, and there's no guarantee that we'll have officers available. I mean, it's on an as-needed basis, but there's requests made for it.
Is that, my concern is that, you know, would they, if they don't live close, would they want to just do a two-hour shift, you know, just for that 12 to 2 period? I don't-
We've had two-hour shifts before.
You could be working the shift.
So maybe, maybe, part of this could be, if it's not, if a Brookhaven police officer's not available, automatically defaults to DeKalb County.
Yes. We have been able to, to apply and comply with, with all the requests that we've had so far. Getting in with the, with the noise ordinance, though, we are adopting a new noise ordinance, I'm assuming, very shortly. And that'll dictate the noise levels that are acceptable, so.
Yes, Susan?
If I may, there is not a condition about soundproofing, so I'm sure we'll need to address that. But I wanted to point out two differences in conditions, in that we received this at such a late point in time. Condition number one, and the staff conditions limits the closing time to 2:00 AM. So they were opposed to that, so I'm not sure if you want to talk about that more. And then condition number two of the staff condition states that the use of the subject property for a nightclub shall be prohibited, whereas in their condition proposed under number nine, is that they shall not advertise it as such. So there's a difference in using it as such and advertising it as such. So we would recommend that you go with staff condition number two. And we have condition number nine in their listed conditions.
Any questions for opposition or for Mr. Hilliard?
I have a question for Mr. Hilliard. So the staff has recommended a 2:00 AM closing time. You're asking to stay open to the 4:00 AM closing.
No, 2:30.
No?
Two, well, 2:30 is really what their request is. They're trying to be consistent with the other late-night establishments in the area. That's, that's the basis of that request. That's the only condition we disagree with. We agree with, I apologize for making it appear as if we were saying something different. It is not a nightclub. That condition number 10 really was, number, number nine was really to make it clear that they're not going to say they're not a nightclub and advertise as if they are a nightclub. That's really the reason why.
So we're going to have both conditions?
That's right. I think both would make it even more clear.
So where do you say the 2:30 closing time?
We didn't address the 2:30 closing time in our conditions. It's the staff's condition that says 2:00 AM, so.
But I thought you said you wanted to stay open the same as your competitors.
That's right.
Well, that's 4:00 AM.
Well, I, yeah, what he's saying is 2:30 AM with an opportunity for everybody to be out the door by 3:00 AM.
So stop serving at 2:30, that thing.
That's not in here, though, is it?
It's not in my condition.
And it's not, Susan, you, you don't, do you have the 2:30 request?
You could ask him to come up, absolutely.
2:00. So it's not posted anywhere?
I'll do Susan first. Susan?
Susan, I want to just clarify. The other establishments in this northeast plaza, in this very same, that do stay open, late-night establishments, how many of them have SLUPS?
I'm not certain of how many have SLUPS, in that they transfer from DeKalb County. So we've honored what was approved in the county.
But we don't know, I mean, they would have been required to have had a SLUP in DeKalb County, right, Mr. Hilliard?
One would think that they would have been. We haven't been able to find those records, but one would think that that would be the requirement.
Hakeem's got those records in his car.
May we have a copy?
I guess what I'm not clear on is if, if the applicant had come in and had just applied as a restaurant, what would be his closing hours?
The issue is that they're proposing to stay open after 12:30 and serve alcohol. So that puts them in the realm of a late-night establishment. And when you're placed in the realm of a late-night establishment, then you have to seek a special land use permit to provide for that in this zoning district.
Well, do places like Old Line Dog or Righteous Room have a SLUP?
Yes, they do.
I don't know if they have them or not.
She doesn't know if they applied as a restaurant or as a nightclub either.
Well, I'm just saying, we know of restaurants that serve alcohol, stay open past 12:30, so.
We don't know if they applied as a restaurant.
I'm just concerned about an issue of fairness.
Right.
I just want to be fair to all of our businesses, that if we require, you know, one person to have a SLUP because he's serving food after midnight and staying open till 2:00, we're requiring him to go through this special SLUP process, where we haven't required others.
This hasn't come up before us, though, right?
What?
This hasn't come up before us yet. That was at DeKalb County.
Well, except we've licensed places like the Righteous Room under the city of Atlanta, and we know they stay open-
City of Brookhaven.
I mean, city of, I'm sorry.
It's late.
Am I getting the-
Getting punchy.
Tired or what?
It's certainly not the staff's intention to not treat someone unfairly.
Well, I know that. And I just want to make sure that we are giving equal treatment to our businesses, too. I appreciate the desire to open a business. We think that is an American dream. And I want to, I want to encourage that. But you know, we already have noise problems and other crime problems in this shopping center. So we don't want to add to our woes. I want to believe that you're going to be a good operator, and the police, you know, won't ever be called to your establishment. I can't wait to try the food that you cook. But having said all of that, we can't add, add to the noise and the problems and the crime in the neighborhood. So I'm just really struggling as to what is fair. I mean, we could give them, we could give them a SLUP that says close at 2:00 AM. I mean, I don't know. Does that really solve the problem?
I kind of, because of the soundproofing issue, which we're having in other places in the city. And the problem with sound is bass, which is, as you might know, is omnidirectional, which means it doesn't go to where it's pointed. It goes everywhere. It doesn't, you can't determine where it's, you know, where it's going to go. And the soundproofing thing is interesting to me. And I don't know that that can be solved right now. I mean, a 30-day deferral might give time to come up with some greater safeguards in concert with what some of the neighbors are concerned about. Because what the gentleman said earlier, Mr. Matthews, about, you know, the five-year thing, you know, those things I hadn't thought about before. So it might, it might give us a little time to, to wrap up some of those concerns that we've heard tonight, and with the soundproofing thing, where it might make us a little more comfortable, maybe the residents a little more comfortable. Maybe they can meet with your client. That's always important to put faces to names.
Mayor, I know that, in speaking with the applicant about this issue and visiting the site, I know that he's got a contract conditional, and I don't think the deferral would, would work in his situation. Rather have a denial than a deferral, I think, because-
What is, what is your thought on that?
That was at least what I was relating, but-
That's, that's probably accurate. I was, I was, as an alternative possibly, is if it were, if you were inclined to approve it, maybe it would be subject to working out some type of sound proposal with the city of-
What about a two-week deferral? Would that sink a ship? Two weeks?
That's, that's fine. That will work.
You know, the, the issue on sound, I agree that, you know, at the end of the day, you don't want that bass to reach any residential area. And you don't want to add to crime. And the soundproofing interior to the, to the facility is really a decision that the business owner would have to make, because the sound meters, sound meter out there at the residential site doesn't care whether you have soundproofing or not. It's, you know, that's just going to make it their ability to raise volume a little bit on the inside. I may be wrong, but-
But if you have, I mean, it doesn't mean you have to soundproof the entire club. You would do the area around where those bass bins are and to kind of dampen it a little bit.
Yeah.
Just your district, huh?
This is, this is the fourth district, which is my district. And as a council member, we've encouraged each of, each of us to make sure we visit the site, meet the applicant, and we have. I think that's just due diligence. This is, we want to be a business-friendly community, but we want to do it correctly. And the issues that have come up, Bates was very, he was right on target. We want to look to make sure that we're not adding to the crime, and we're not adding to noise pollution, which is the major complaint that comes. It appears that these issues are being resolved here. I do like the idea of a two-week hold. Come to a consensus of what that level needs to be, because that is an issue. We have just recently updated our ordinances. We can address when these situations happen. I like the fact that the police will actually be there, Brookhaven Police, because as you know, when you are using an off-duty police officer from the city of Brookhaven, you also get his car. And the presence of that car is, it makes a loud statement. We try to maximize that use when we're utilizing Brookhaven police officers off-duty. We're also a very diverse community. And the Ethiopian population is huge, and maybe 30,000 or 40,000 in Atlanta. But there's a good portion of them that live along that Buford Highway corridor. And one of the things that we talked about as far as our economic development is to be inclusive, and also to celebrate the different cultures that exist. I saw your plans. I thought your plans were well-done. I think your willingness to address a lot of the issues of concerns are appropriate and on target. And with the noise being addressed within the next two weeks, I think from my standpoint, I'm in favor of this.
Some objective criteria for how you deal with, you know, the soundproofing, yes, there'd be a condition, so.
Well, I mean, I want to bring the chief in on this one to make sure, from a, and the-
Or sound engineer, have a sound engineer, you know. Or sound engineer, have a sound engineer, you know.
One, I just want to clarify, our next council meeting is actually not until the 13th of May.
That's.
So it's one, two, three, three weeks.
Three weeks.
It's a.
Is it okay?
That work with that?
He said, didn't mean to talk to your client. Sorry.
You were asking him.
The audio was, Hakeem just didn't answer.
I would also recommend that, you know, whatever level is decided on, if he tested not only during the day but also in the evening, it has a different effect that night.
Yeah, at midnight.
And some of the complaints that we heard and some of the emails that I've gotten, I read them all, what went on previous, at the previous location, sounds like, I asked how was the issue addressed, and we called the police and it would take hours. Well, that's, there's a new sheriff in town here. We're not in that ballgame. We have a three-minute response time. We have a police officer there. We've just updated our ordinances on noise abatement and our enforcement of it. So we're looking to make sure we're business-friendly, we can help in economic development, culturally, expand what we do in this city, and still at the same time protect our citizens.
All right. Is there a motion on the floor?
I make a motion that we accept. Can we go back and get the right one? I'm sorry, I will. I'll get it here right. I would make a motion that we defer until our next council meeting on May the 13th, slop number 1401, with the condition that the soundproofing, sound abatement on this be decided on in cooperation with our police department. And sound engineers, Max?
Yeah, sound engineer. And with the residents, I would like for Hakeem to get with the residents who spoke, the lady whose mom's 92 and the lady on the Autozone.
Yes, very much so.
Mr. Matthews and whomever else, please get their numbers and information. Anybody else that emailed on it too, I think would be, just to have at least one meeting with them to address concerns.
I'd second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of the deferral, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The item is deferred. Thank you. Okay, number?
Number four, just on page three of the agenda. And this is RC 1401, Rock Haven Homes LLC rezoning request from RNCD to RA-8 to construct a 27-lot, single-family detached subdivision for property located at East Roxborough Road. 1937, 1969, 1971, 1945, 1961, 1953, 1125 Wright Avenue, North Druid Hills, 1739, 1741, 1785, 1775, 1767, 1759, 1747, 1735.
We forgot to hear from Stan on that last thing.
All right.
I'm sorry, Stan. I can talk to you afterwards about, the planning commission had a different recommendation on that. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Susan. Open the public hearing on this.
And we did stipulate to the staff report on that case wherein the planning commission did recommend denial.
All right. Thank you.
In regard to case RC 1401, I certainly don't need to go back over the property location as Mrs. Garrett has done that. The site is, contains 6.24 acres, and the projection on the screen identifies the subject property appears to be the light purple area. The current zoning is RNCD. They're asking for an RA-8 zoning. As you can see, there are multitude of zonings around the property. There are several property owners involved in this particular case, and they're all referenced in, within your staff report. The proposal is for 27-lot, single-family detached subdivision. The, if you would place the site plan on the screen. If you see the parcel to the northwest, it's no longer part of the overall previously master-planned area at Wright, Roxborough and North Druid Hills Road. That portion of the property identified as out on the site was rezoned a couple of months ago by the city council. So that leaves the 6.24 acres that you're considering at this time. The applicant's proposal for 27 lots calls for, or allows for, 4.33 dwelling units per acre, wherein the comprehensive plan allows for eight dwelling units per acre. The staff has recommended approval of this request for rezoning. And Daniel, if you can scoot the plan up just a little bit on the page.
Yes, up so we can see the bottom of it. There you go.
Or make it a little bit smaller.
Yeah.
Whoops.
There you go. Let's go down a little bit.
Just, yeah.
Right there.
The way the site is, the development's configured on the site, the only point of ingress egress is from the road to the north.
Wright Avenue.
Which is Wright Avenue. And all of the properties that border East Roxborough and Goodwin and North Druid Hills Road will have rear entry from the roadway that enters into the property from the point of ingress off Wright Avenue. The staff did recommend the elimination of Lot 27, which is in the center of the site. We believe that that is suited for green space. The applicant did agree to that, which does drop the density to 4.17 dwelling units per acre. And we have recommended approval with 15 conditions. They're in your staff report on page 166 and 167. And during the planning commission hearing, the applicant agreed to all conditions, and the planning commission did recommend approval of this request. Thank you.
No additional conditions from planning commission?
No additional conditions, nester.
You're earning your money tonight, Doug.
Double time, we got one going on in Lawrenceville right now too. Good times back. Let me just say, I worked on this site for over four years. I mean, we worked in DeKalb, it's on, what it's on now for 45 attached units. And I couldn't do it because it was, they were condos. So, long story short, we've got some property owners that have been very patient in working with more than one developer. Rock Haven Homes is now in a position to make this happen. The conditions of staff are agreeable to us. This is a single-family detached development, which is, has been important to the Pine Hills Service Association and others. And so I've given you some photographs, and I'm just going to go through those briefly. The first photograph is what you will see off of the rear entry road, okay? Off of the internal road, I guess is a better way to say it. And then the next two photographs are the fronts that will front on Roxborough, or examples of the fronts that will front on Roxborough.
Oh, so there's no big wall shielding it from?
No road, no. We want to keep it open, make it pedestrian-friendly, have sidewalks, access and that kind of thing. So we feel like this would be a great contribution to the neighborhood, and like I said, we support the staff's recommended conditions. And I would point out that we do have a letter from Pine Hill Service Association where I did not put in the record, but I'll be, give it to you if you want to look at it, supporting this project.
What about the folks across the street of Wright?
Well, you know, if you look across Wright, that's a pull-to development that we did years ago, and the center of that, of that development, while it's a single-family detached development as well, is RA-8.
Right.
So this is a consistent, this is a consistent zoning with what's across Wright. And also, if you look, if you look further north into Lenox Park, you've got a mix of uses. Also, up and down North Druid Hills Road, you've got from R-75 to RA-8 to RM. So it is, it's sort of an eclectic situation. These will be nice homes. This is sort of a entryway into that part of Brookhaven and Buckhead area. We think this would be a nice amenity to that area.
Thank you.
And I've got my clients here to answer any questions if there are any that, if there is opposition, I'll reserve 21 seconds for.
Seven, twelve. All right, is there any opposition?
Yes, sir.
Oh, really? Well, Joe, you want to talk about?
Brad, would you come up?
There is support though.
Okay, all right. Well, you want to do some support ones first?
You want to listen to this, Brad?
All right, so who's up?
Who's here for support?
Jeanette Cassa.
Is this Jeanette?
Excuse me, Jean.
Jean.
Mr. and Mrs. Cassa, I'm not sure.
Is there a Mr. or Mrs. Cassa present?
Do they play?
Okay, anyone on the bed?
And Sean.
Hi, good evening. I'm Sean McInerney. I own 1961 East Roxborough Road, and I also live off of 2564 Brookline Circle in Brookhaven Residence. Real excited to be here because we've been talking to DeKalb County for a long time. So being here with Brookhaven is nice. Totally in support. We were talking earlier about crime and stuff. I'm not going to belabor the fact that this block has fallen into disrepair. This is a great opportunity for us. It's a great opportunity for the city. The tax revenue will increase, won't be a huge tax burden on the schools. The other part of it too is we're with our own old neighbors, trading war stories of police showing up, and I don't want to do that anymore. I don't think you do either, so, you know, definitely in full favor of the support. It's a long time coming. Hopefully we'll see it come out of the ground this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Hughes. Where we get to drill you? Brad, I just wanted to have you come up, and I'm going to make some comments. Doug, do you remember when this was 196, that 196-unit project?
Do what?
Were you part of this when originally was like 196 units?
Yeah.
And then were you there when it went down to 96?
We were, we originally proposed stacked flats.
Right.
And condos, and actually looked at putting some commercial at the intersection of North Druid Hills Road and Roxborough.
I don't know what you were smoking.
Well, you know, I mean, we were looking at a, you know, sort of a sub-contain deal. But we wound up with 45 units.
Right.
Which were attached.
Right.
And as you well know, had all kinds of conditions on it that made it impossible.
Well, the point I was going to make, and when you said you had support from Pine Hills, I live across the street from this project. I live in Pine Hills. And they could be very vocal, and they had the right to be vocal, and what was trying to be done originally was not what that area needed. So this has gone through a series of evolutions. And it's at 27 homes for this section, this is a phenomenal project for this area. If anybody drives around, they'll see the houses that are abandoned. It's crime-infested. You're going to be getting the celebratory shooting from some of those houses because the people that live in there shouldn't be there. There's all kinds of things that have been going on over the years. This is a, I talked about this a year ago, January, saying this was the number one project I was working on as councilman for the fourth district. The day the shovel breaks the ground for this project is going to be the official start of the economic redevelopment of the fourth district. That's how important this project is. And I can't say enough about this man and how well he has addressed the issue, his interaction with the community. See, you can do it. We knew you could do it.
I don't wear the black hat off.
And Brad, I just wanted you to come up because I want the people to see who you are, and in my estimate, you're the example of what we need in this city from a development. I want to.
I just have one comment before you make the motion, just as a point of observation.
Doug, I don't want to create precedence here that we don't clap. It's okay that, just want to make sure.
Just go.
There's rules up there.
We talked about schools in an earlier development, the proposed impact on this school. Report from DeKalb County would be to funnel into Woodward Elementary School, which is at 122% capacity. And there's no clamoring from the public about the impact on schools. That's an exact example of why schools are important. No one cares about it in this area, but that school impact on that overcapacity because the school's failing. And we've got to bring, hold the DeKalb County School Board accountable for fixing these kind of issues, because these single-family homes, we want families and kids to grow up in them.
Thank you. All right. Any more discussion? Is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Rebecca.
I was just going to thank you and applaud you for leaving that Lot 27 as green space. I think that's a really beautiful thing to have in the middle of this, you know, pretty dense development, but that's a precious piece of green in the middle of that. And I think the people, I think it's going to really pay back for you in terms of added value to the residents. And I applaud you for giving that up for green space and not putting up another house.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve RC 14-01, Rock Haven Homes LLC rezoning requests from RNCD to RA-8 to construct a 27-lot, single fam, single-family detached subdivision for property located at East Roxborough Road, 1937, 1969, 1971, 1945, 1961, 1953. Also 1125 Wright Avenue, North Druid Hills Road, number 1739, 1741, 1785, 1775, 1767, 1759, 1747, 1735.
Second it?
Discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion, state, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. It's adopted. Shh, no clapping, folks. Thank you. Don't mean to dampen enthusiasm, but it is a great project. All right, we'll take a, we're going to take a three-minute recess. A few more chances to file out.
Process.
Okay. Open the public hearing. Susan, this is going to be short.
Very.
Okay.
I apologize, I was talking to a citizen. Which one are we?
Number five, which is the old number two.
Which is the public participation plan.
Correct.
This particular text amendment was initiated by the planning commission. The request was to have additional community engagement prior to planning commission hearings and then also prior to council meetings. So the way the text has been written is to require someone to identify with the submission of their application, what their public participation plan is, and to hold a meeting with the public, with the neighborhood, prior to the planning commission hearing, and then to provide a report of the results of the meeting. So that's the genesis of it, that's the basis of it. The planning commission recommended approval of this proposal as written, and we recommend approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comment? No comment? All right, we'll close the public hearing. And number six, which is the old number three?
Are you going to?
I need a motion?
Sorry.
Sure.
Y'all keeping me in line, I appreciate that.
I move that we approve ordinance 2014-04-01, consideration of approval for RC 14-03 text amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding public participation within the land use application process.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, number six.
The next item, RC 14-04 text amendment to the zoning ordinance providing for the planning commission deferrals of land use applications.
Mayor and council, this text amendment was also initiated by the planning commission. The purpose of this text amendment is to allow for the planning commission to have the authority to take final action and actually defer an application. As you know, in the past, they were only able to recommend deferral, which would then make its way to the council. So this will actually be good for the process, the planning commission and the public. The public will be certain that when the planning commission defers it, that they have the authority to do that. It allows the planning commission to do a one-time 30-day deferral. It would then require the council hearing to be pushed out a month from the former advertised date. So the date of the new meeting would be stated on the record. The planning commission did recommend approval of the language as written, and we would recommend that be approved. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, is there a motion?
Public hearing.
Open the public hearing. Yes, nobody, no comment? Is there a motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance number 2014-04-01, consideration for approval for RC 14-03 text amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding public participation within the land use application process. Nope? That was the second one, sorry.
That was the second one, sorry. I'm sorry. RZ fourteen, RZ fourteen dash oh four text amendment to the zoning ordinance providing for planning commission deferrals of land use applications.
Okay, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, any discussion?
I'd just like to commend the planning commission and thank them for some thoughtful, smart proposals to our, and changes to our ordinances.
Makes our job easier.
Yes.
And we've got to say, Shannon was the one who drove both of them, so.
Thank you, Shannon.
Shannon, thank you, Shannon, Stan, and John Funny, who are all here from the planning commission, we appreciate your service, you're doing a great job, and we appreciate the updates you give us, Stan, thank you. All right, all in favor of adopting the motion, signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's adopted. Now, we're to old business, is that correct?
Correct, and there's no business under old business.
Okay, and then new business?
New business, item number one is ordinance twenty fourteen dash zero four dash zero five text amendment, chapter eighteen, article five, multifamily rental housing apartments. This is the ordinance that we talked about at our last work session whereby the city will have the ability and the authority to audit the interior inspections that are required to receive a business license.
Okay, is there, there's no, it's just an action item? Okay, any motion required?
Yes.
Okay. No?
Yes, we need an order, a motion, please.
I'll move that we approve ordinance two thousand fourteen dash oh four dash oh five, a text amendment to chapter eighteen, article five, multifamily rental housing apartments.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the ordinance, signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's passed, number two?
Mr. Mayor, before we go on, just so that, we amended chapter eighteen for purposes of the audit, but it was further amended to provide for fines in the event that the audit disclosed that the certificate was not correct.
Right, okay, right.
Does that motion need to be updated because of that?
Do we just have the one ordinance?
We put it all on one ordinance.
Okay, no, it doesn't. It's a matter of explanation.
Gotcha, all right.
Okay, number two is approval to grant authorization to the mayor to sign the Google fiber land lease agreement, this is in the form of a resolution, a resolution twenty fourteen dash zero four dash zero four, we discussed this earlier in our work session.
Okay, any motion on the floor?
I would like to move that we pass resolution twenty fourteen dash oh four dash oh four, approval to grant authorization to the mayor to sign Google fiber land lease agreement.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor of this motion, signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it passed. Other business?
Other business, number one, City of Brookhaven Arbor Day proclamation, we need a motion.
Is there a motion?
I move that we pass.
Is there no motion?
We still have.
Oh, excuse.
New business.
Okay, we still have new business.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, based upon the amended agenda, there is a resolution, and that resolution number is twenty fourteen dash oh four dash oh seven, authorizing the city attorney to respond to the double-dipping and unethical allegations against the city manager. Would you like me to read that letter into the record, sir?
Please.
Yes.
Okay. It's addressed to WSB TV, Mr. Justin Farmer, Atlanta, Georgia. Dear Mr. Farmer, the City of Brookhaven would like to clarify implications of wrongdoing contained in a report contained in WSB TV's Friday, April eighteen, twenty fourteen, five PM and six PM broadcast regarding Brookhaven City Manager Marie Garrett. The report referenced allegations of double-dipping, which is considered an illegal activity. The documents provided to you by the city clearly outlined Ms. Garrett's compensation arrangements when she was engaged as consultant upon incorporation of the city in twenty twelve, when she accepted the position of city manager in twenty thirteen, and when her compensation was renegotiated in twenty fourteen. Under the terms of the twenty thirteen agreement, Ms. Garrett received a set salary for four ten-hour workdays. If the circumstances were such that when required, Ms. Garrett to work her scheduled day off, she would bill an additional two hundred dollars per hour. It is the city's position that this was in no way double-dipping, which implied Ms. Garrett illegally and wrongfully billed the city twice for the same work and/or hours, but rather reflects Ms. Garrett's compensation package agreed to by the city council. Her twenty fourteen arrangement increasing her annual salary to two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars commencing March twenty fourteen has no similar arrangement for being compensated for additional hours. The mayor and council consider Ms. Garrett to be a valued asset of the city, and she has not engaged in any wrongdoing or unethical behavior whatsoever, therefore, the mayor and council request at minimum that you provide this information to your viewers, so Ms. Garrett's reputation as a public employee will not be further tarnished. Ms. Garrett has over thirty years of experience in public administration with an excellent reputation, very truly yours, Tom Segur, Jr.
What kind of motion would that be?
That would be a motion to accept the resolution authorizing me to send this correspondence.
Okay, is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion to give our attorney, Tom Curry, authority to issue that letter.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution, signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
All right.
Let me just add, I'm not sure sending it to Justin Farmer is the only person you should send it to, I would send it to management as well.
Okay.
He's just the anchor.
Can amend that? Okay, just send it to WSB, okay.
I would even suggest, should we go out publicly and publish that letter?
Yeah, it'll be public, we'll provide a copy of it.
I'd be going to a newspaper, and let's actually publish it, take out an ad and put it in the air.
Well, I don't think we need to do that.
Well, we'll talk about it.
Why don't you look?
Let's get through these first, and then we'll have more discussion about it.
All right, all right, the second resolution in front of you is resolution twenty fourteen oh four oh six, and that resolution is authorizing the release of the mayor to discuss in today's council meeting the subject matter of the summer twenty thirteen executive session wherein the city manager's work schedule and Friday compensation was discussed, meaning for the year twenty thirteen.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution twenty fourteen dash zero four dash zero seven-
Zero, zero six.
Sorry, I meant that, resolution twenty fourteen, twenty fourteen dash zero four dash zero six, as stated by the city attorney.
I second.
Any discussion? Daniel, do I have the most updated version of this? I want to make sure.
Mr. Mayor, you have a motion on the floor.
Okay, yeah, we're going to do a discussion. I'm just going to read.
Mr. Mayor, before, you cannot read until you pass the motion.
It's a discussion.
But you, but this is a matter which was discussed in executive session, this is authorizing you to discuss it, okay, there you go.
Getting, really getting there. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of adopting the resolution, signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, next resolution? The third one.
Okay. The third resolution is resolution number twenty fourteen oh four oh five, authorizing the release of city attorney representatives Keith Jernigan and Laura Cosgrove notes of the November twenty-two, twenty fourteen executive session.
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen executive session. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do we have a motion?
We didn't have a motion.
Okay, go ahead, I can't make motions.
I can, no problem. I move that we instruct Attorney Tom Curry on twenty fourteen oh four oh five to release executive session notes regarding November twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen.
Is that a resolution number?
That's right, that's the correct number.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution, signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, the final, the final resolution for your consideration is resolution twenty fourteen oh four oh eight, a resolution to direct the publishing of elected and appointed officials' compensation, benefits, and reimbursed expenses on the city website. Just for information purposes, that would include all of you as the elected officials, it would also include the appointed officials under the charter, which currently today include Ms. Garrett, Ms. Hyatt, Ms. Klein, and your city attorney.
And that's it?
And, there are other appointed officers that can be appointed, the mayor's going to talk about one later on, and it will also include that.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this resolution, twenty fourteen dash zero four dash zero eight, as read by the city attorney.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to point out that this, this resolution in particular is really all about transparency. We are, with these moves, trying to open up all the documents to the public, to let you see everything that we, that the city's spending on salaries for elected officials and key employees.
Yeah, it's important, we don't know that other cities do this, but we think it's going to be beneficial to other cities, maybe they'll follow suit. Anything else on that? All in favor of the motion, of the resolution, signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Okay, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege here and speak, can I do that?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
There's been some controversy ginned up about our city manager, and we're pretty upset about it. There was some kind of hijack journalism going on, and there were some actions being taken by one of our own that kind of helped feed the fire of something that wasn't at all what it appeared to be. We have a wonderful city manager here, and I'm sorry, Murray, you're having to sit here and go through this, that he's having to read in these resolutions or a retraction letter from WSB. It's a shame that your reputation was at all besmirched, you've done nothing wrong, and just the fact that we're having to say that is tough, because we never expected to hear something like what we heard on the news Friday night. The documents from executive session, the reason we're releasing these documents is because there's been some misleading statements going on about what was known for Ms. Garrett's compensation by the city council, and what was approved, or what was discussed and agreed to. The first document I'm going to read to you is a summary of a particular discussion we had last summer, when Ms. Garrett was in her second period of employment with the City of Brookhaven, in the first period of employment, she was purely a consultant, where she, for ten weeks, was billing at a rate of two hundred dollars an hour, which was a rate that was negotiated by Councilwoman Williams and Councilmember Iyer, directing that Ms. Garrett be paid the two hundred dollars an hour for her consulting. She didn't intend to be city manager, she had told us at the beginning, she wanted to consult with us and to find a city manager, help us find a city manager, she even wrote the job description for city manager. We interviewed people after she became our consultant for city manager. Subsequent to her first ten-week period of employment, where she was strictly a consultant, we began negotiating, trying to get Mr. Garrett to stay on what she didn't intend to do. She had a pretty successful consulting business and had other products, personal, family, real estate issues that she had been working on, she didn't want to be full-time, didn't want to work for the City of Brookhaven as city manager at that time, she wanted to consult, as she had asked. We saw her value within those first ten weeks, and we're very excited about what we had. Nobody else in the metro area, and nobody else in the country that we interviewed came anywhere near her qualifications of thirty-two years of experience in municipal government, nationwide and in the state of Georgia. She's got unique abilities, particular to startups. She was interim city manager for Johns Creek in their startup, she assisted the City of Milton in their startup, there was no other city manager candidate in the state of Georgia anywhere, like I said, that had that type of experience. Startup experience is unique and different. The city manager talent pool is very small, and the needs are very great. So, we negotiated, us as a council, a salary for Ms. Garrett last year at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but with the caveat from her, because she didn't plan on staying here long-term, that she be allowed to utilize a day off, work four days a week, at ten hours a day, which was really sometimes twelve, sixteen, eighteen hours a day, for flex time. She wanted to work four days a week, and on that fifth day, if her services were needed, if she was required to work, she would charge the City of Brookhaven that two hundred dollar rate that had been negotiated by Councilman Iyer or Councilwoman Williams back in December. It was something we all agreed to, it was something we all felt comfortable with, felt comfortable defending because of her abilities and what she was doing for our city. Was never any discussion that there was anything other than that going to happen. We've had a council member stating in a newscast that our city manager was unethical in reference to this arrangement, we think it was in reference to the arrangement, but the executive session that we had in the summer of two thousand and thirteen, after we had agreed to her compensation package, just going to read a small portion of that, it's a long executive session, but it was brought to the attention of the council that Councilman Iyer was requiring work of city manager Marie Garrett on her day off. Councilman Iyer was admonished that his frequent contacts and work requests of the city manager on her day off and on the weekends was costing the city money due to her off-hour billing arrangement. So this is an instance where we were in executive session, we don't ever get to talk about executive session stuff, so this is a first for the City of Brookhaven. I sat right next to Councilman Iyer and told him that his frequent contacts, emailing, and other avenues of getting work out of Ms. Garrett on her bona fide and inherently vested off day was costing the City of Brookhaven taxpayers money. Councilman Iyer recently claimed not to know about this arrangement, but we've all agreed, we all were there, we all witnessed it, and it's just not the case that he didn't know or that we didn't know, everybody was in full knowledge of what had happened, and what was, what the arrangement was, and Councilman Iyer was admonished for utilizing her day off and was known to be costing the city money, and it was in fact the impetus for costing the city money, because Ms. Garrett had not been billing at two hundred dollar rate up until this point. She spent three or four months under this arrangement without having billed the consultation time, or the two hundred dollar an hour time. It was the actions by Councilman Iyer that led to the beginning of the billing for her time, because she had the right to be off, and she had the right to enjoy her day off, and the right not to be contacted or bothered, and Councilman Iyer was costing the city money and not respecting that. So I have copies of this to hand out to anybody who wants a copy of it. The second document I'm going to hand out is an actual artifact from an executive session wherein our city attorney had broken his ribs and wasn't present, so he had sent two of his associates, Keith Jernigan and Laura Cosgrove, to cover the executive session. This was an executive session where we were talking about, among other things, real estate, and Marie was in there showing us how she was negotiating the lease for, potential leases for all the properties we were trying to get into, and at that point, after we finished that work, we asked everybody to leave, including Marie, so we could discuss how we could keep her here for a longer period of time, to get out of the agreement that we had before, to secure her services for a longer amount of time. There's been some discussion, and again, seemingly amnesia on the council's agreement of what the salary range would be for Ms. Garrett. What I have here are the notes from two separate attorneys, taken independently at the meeting, where it shows that the compensation of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollar salary plus benefits was going to be something that we would negotiate with Ms. Garrett, that was the top range that we got agreement on. And on one of the notes, you'll see on the second page, that two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year- for Marie, Councilman Iyer also need a backup deputy manager. So, to claim that you weren't aware of what we were going to be paying Ms. Garrett, and then to have these notes from independent note taker verifying that the amount was discussed, there's no objection, and then an additional note that said stated you thought we should need to get a deputy manager as well, is, uh, just further evidence that we as a council value her services, and we all agreed that she needed to be paid in order to keep her here. Subsequent to this, which is public record, you'll see on the budget, the compensation that we all voted for, except for Councilman Madison, because he wanted a higher raise for city employees, but, um, police, yes, city police, uh, wherein, um, the combined budget for a city manager and, um, a deputy city manager was $365,000. And, and then the assistant, there was a $400,000, I guess that was an earlier version, but, um, Councilman Iyer voted for that budget item to pay Ms. Garrett what we had agreed to. It's unfortunate, I don't enjoy this, I don't enjoy sitting up here, having to lay out evidence as to what occurred with their compensation. You can argue with her compensation number, I'm fully prepared to defend, uh, what we are paying Ms. Garrett, and I, it's completely justified, her abilities justify her pay. There's also some documents up here where salary surveys were done, that puts her in line with other city managers of Class A cities, which is what Brookhaven is considered as a Class A city. I can't speak highly enough of Marie. We at the city know we're not perfect, we know we've had some hiccups in the road, and the first day that I took office as mayor, that's the first thing I said, we're a startup, we're going to have hiccups, we've had our hiccups. But what has gone right is so much more important and so much more voluminous than what has gone wrong. When you look at the popularity of our police department, and you see how our citizens are reacting to how, positively how much more police presence we have than we had under DeKalb County, you will see that Marie Garrett is the one who found Chief Yandura. She's responsible for bringing Chief Yandura to the city of Brookhaven. She's responsible for building our police department in record time, along with Chief Yandura, to a, a level that I think is the best in the state. And I hear from other police jurisdictions, other police chiefs, about how great our force is, we've taken the best from around the area. And Marie, and Gary, and Rick Stone, our HR guy, are responsible for that. Marie Garrett is responsible for making sure that our city is on a firm financial footing, that within 10 months of our operations, we have a, we had a $1 million reserve, in the, in the savings account, we had a $1 million reserve, that's unprecedented. This year, we're going to add another $1 million to our reserve. That doesn't happen if you have a cut rakers, cut rate or second rate city manager. Believe me, having a city manager without the level of confidence that Marie Garrett has can cost the city of Brookhaven a lot more than $214,000. Her job is to do what she's doing, she's doing it better than we can, we could have expected, we're in better shape than we could have expected, and Marie Garrett is a big reason for that, for that success. And I'm outraged, irritated, and upset what she's been put through these last 48 hours, last 72 hours, this weekend, on Easter weekend, and it was unnecessary, and it was untoward, and it was reprehensible what was done to her this weekend. And, um, Marie, we love you, we appreciate you, we thank you for your service to the city of Brookhaven, we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
If anybody else has anything to say, please take a point of personal privilege.
I'll just second that. I, I'm going to speak a little longer.
Go ahead.
I've said this before, you've heard me say this, when we started out, we knew we were green, we were really novice, and there's three things that we agreed on before Marie came on board. We knew, uh, two important things, we knew there were things that we didn't know, but what we feared the most was not knowing what we didn't know, and that was kind of scary getting into this. We knew that we had to hire good people to make sure that we were doing our job correctly. And when Marie came on board, she came on board as a consultant, and actually helped us go out and set the criteria for what we needed in a city manager. And in checking that out, it became pretty apparent, from what we interviewed, and what we had in front of us was the very best option we could have had. And we all unanimously agreed to bring her on board, um, and when we, we moved quickly, as we could, out of a consultant arrangement, and into, um, a hired position with the four days, and that saved us a lot of money versus the consulting fee. You probably could have held on to it if you wanted to, but that was a good move for the city. Bottom line is, you know, I walk around and people say, guys are doing a great job out there, goo, good for you, you know, they want to shake your hand. Well, our charter sets it up where our, our city manager runs the city. If we look good, it's because what she's doing. Let's give credit where credit's due. Uh, it, it, it's a shame, uh, I mean, I, I know she is a, one of the most ethical people that I know, and to have heard that report on Friday night insinuating, um, ethics violations, um, I had a knot in my stomach, and I said, surely this can't be happening. But it did. The money she has saved us, the progress we've made as a city, the reason why we get honors like the fastest growing zip code in the Atlanta area, is because of the programs that she's directed, the people that she's brought on board, the reason why we have the best police department, is because of the police chief that she's been able to shrewdly bring on board. And I'm telling you, um, I'm glad you're here, and I hope you stay a long time. You're worth every penny.
Thank you.
I, I, I would ditto all that my colleagues have said, and, and I too want to just, uh, express my appreciation for, people need to understand that we, once we realized what we had in you, we were begging you to stay, and you were resisting us, and we kept begging, and we kept working away at you, and you, and you had other things to do, and you've got a family, and you've got other things that, uh, that you wanted to get done, and we begged you to stay. So if we, if we paid, uh, the price, you're absolutely worth it, and I am heartsick and devastated that you had to endure this news report, which, uh, I, I as well as anybody understand how shoddy news, irresponsible reporting gets done, and I'm just sorry that you were the victim of it. And I understand how you feel that your 30-year sterling reputation gets tarnished in one two-minute spot on the local news. It got repeated a number of times. Um, I, I'm glad that we're sending this letter to WSB, because they need to, you know, correct it and retract it, but I was sickened to my stomach that I saw one of our council members really be the, the whole focus of the story, saying, uh, that, that this was wrong and pointing the finger. He was telling a lie, he knew better, uh, we were all well aware of your compensation at every step along the way. So for him to say otherwise, uh, was just totally baffling to me. I apologize. I'm sorry you've had to endure that, and I apologize to your family, and I just hope you'll give us a second chance.
Yes, Marie, and I hope you don't regret coming to Brookhaven. You know, I know, I saw a change in you when I kept working on you in the spring and the summer, I, you saw the possibilities here. I could see it in your eyes, you were excited about what we were going to be able to do here. And I know that was just as much of a part of you wanting to stay on and agreeing to stay on as the compensation we were trying to come up with. It's, you are integral to what we're doing, and, uh, you know, people that want to tear you down make me angry, and I think those people are reprehensible. People that want to practice the politics of personal destruction have a problem in themselves, that they're trying to project onto other people, and that bothers me. And so that's why I'm up here saying what I'm saying. We're going to have a, uh, you know, publish a contract soon, that shows everything that, uh, you know, you're going to be doing for us, and shows your compensation, it's a little bit less than what's in the, what we talked to about, talked about in the executive session. We've tweaked the terms a little bit, but you're going to be here for $214,000 a year, full-time, and we're glad to have you, and we, we want you to stay, and, um, again, I apologize for what you went through. I, you know, what Joe said, we didn't know what we didn't know. We didn't know how great an individual we had in you, um, until we got to see the products of your work. And, uh, again, we appreciate your being here, we appreciate you sitting here, going through this, we appreciate the fact that you came to City Hall Monday morning, uh, ready to get back to work. I know it was distracting, I know it took a lot of time, these, it's Friday and Monday, it was wasted time at the city of Brookhaven because we had to deal with this, it cost the taxpayers even more money, and I'm upset about that. If anybody wants to direct any heat towards Marie Garrett, or blame her for anything, you blame me, you direct the heat to me. You direct the heat to me if there's something you think that, that she's done wrong. I'll take responsibility for it. She's my appointment, and I'm proud of my appointment, and I'm proud she's here. Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
Alright, now we'll move on. Um, the Arbor Day proclamation.
Um, yes.
Lighter subject.
The official Arbor Day, um, celebration is, is this Friday, April the 25th, and we have a proclamation for, uh, your approval.
I move that we approve the Arbor Day proclamation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the Arbor Day proclamation signifies by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright.
Our next item is the naming of the official city tree, and I will yield to Councilmember Williams.
I would like to recommend that we name, uh, cherry tree, no, uh, particular species, but just the cherry tree in all of its glory, as our official city tree. Not that it is the only tree that we will plant, but it is the tree that will be our brand and our landmark, and, uh, will distinguish us and bring us, uh, great joy in the future.
I second it. Any discussion? All in favor of a city tree signifies by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
Aye. And I would just remind you that we are-
Wait, we need, we need three ayes votes.
Oh, aye.
I was the third late, yeah.
Okay, alright. All opposed? Alright, uh, it's, it's passed, we have an official city tree. Um, well, on this one, we were going to amend that to have a cancellation of the June 24th, we might reschedule the later date.
Correct, it's just to announce that. We will, and I'll be reporting to you, uh, a couple of weeks prior to that, what would be coming on the agenda, should we need to meet earlier, or if we could wait till our regular scheduled meeting for July.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Now we have the second public comment section of the night. If anybody has a public comment about anything, please come.
Mr. Matthews? I spoke on March the 26th, reference to the garbage pile that had remained in front of 1618 Richwood Drive, as fate would have it, the next morning before daylight, as I went out to walk my dog daily, there was a truck running there, and being the neighborhood watch chairman, I just eased out in the street so I could at least get a tag if I needed to, and the truck moved towards me. And he said, "Hi, Santa." It was the bobcat operator who operates for Stanton Jones, the owner of Georgian Fine Properties LLC. And I said, "I hope you're here to clean up that garbage pile in that front yard." He said, "Well, it would have done been cleaned up a year ago if Stanton would either get dumpsters and properly are, would provide dump trucks while I'm here." Said, "He has to pay me every time he calls me to do 10% of the job." And said, "I'm just here to do the land, move some dirt around the back of this new house." Long story short, Jim Eyre came by that day, Trey was there that day, your, uh, K, Kivonovich was there that day, and only issued a courtesy warning. That's the fourth visit to that property, and only issues a courtesy warning. Long story short, the garbage pile was gone that day at sundown, because when I came back in from my job, dump trucks was lined up, and the bobcat operator was filling them, and that was gone. She issued the courtesy warning that all the dirt was to be cleaned up in the street, proper silt fence was to be put, and proper ground cover. There was no ground cover ever installed, they did install a silt fence across the driveway. Now, on April 15th, my battery just went dead, but I can do most of it by memory, um, on April 15th, a stop order by a gentleman named Mr. Potts and Kivonovich was issued, that the contractor had not acknowledged any of the operation and no work whatsoever other than erosion control could be done. Now, the way this guy operates, he operates almost under the shadows of dark. Today, with it raining, he pulled down the silt fence across the driveway, grated a driveway, and it is sitting wide open as we stand here with mud all in the street, and if it rains tonight, it's a gully. The house next to it flooded completely, where he was putting the dirt behind that house to wear storm recovery and so forth. Stanton Jones looks you straight in the face, time after time after time, and says, "I'm the most despised and hated builder in this community." And he cheats every building permit, he's building on permits that he's to keep 70% of the floor, and I don't know the exact percentage, but it's basically a side wall and a fourth of the back wall. He gets the final permit, then puts the outside wall around it, that's why the dumpsters stay there, so he can pull the wall that's supposed to be part of the house and puts it in the dumpster. Uh, it's just a commitment of hell around him, he's got other homes that still tags in, in that same Wayland and Richwood circle.
So he's got a silt fence that he removed today off the driveway?
Yes, sir, and I'd give anything.
iPhone four or five, I forgot to charge it.
Here it is. That's the way it's sitting when I left, come to the meeting.
Can we show that to Susan Cannon?
Can I respond a little bit to that? Yeah. One of the things we've talked about, I know that, you know, we have two things, we've got increased code compliance officers that are going to be hitting the streets, um, double the amount of current code compliance officers, and another thing we've discussed is bringing together builders for a builder summit, and we're, and we're also talking about a point system, just like a driver's license, so that if we identify bad builders who are repetitive offenders, they might lose their ability to build here in Brookhaven.
If it's allowed, I'd be more than happy to be there to speak to that gentleman, and I've spoken to him personally.
Definitely, you can come to the builder summit, absolutely.
Absolutely. And then, secondly, I hope that the city will address, and I know, I know the bell went off, but I think this is very important, Easter Sunday was a catastrophe on Wayland, and it took two officers most of their afternoon and so forth, because trees that the owner has been talked to, the owner of the home, the people in the home are rental, renters. The trees have been dead for God knows how long, and vines all over them, and so forth, and those trees fell and took down everything. It destroyed a Lexus or a Toyota SUV, just really literally destroyed it. The people were in California, the police took care of that by getting into the car and identifying some way and found the phone number, but the city should not have to pay for any of that money, because that landowner knows now. There's nothing in writing about that, to my knowledge, but there's been meetings about it and asking him to address that. But, uh, like I said, we're trying to help any way we can and to keep things going, but Stanton Jones is just a cocky, terrible attitude, stretching every law, building an inferior home in Brookhaven.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Next?
Wendy Butler.
Wendy Butler?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I'll be, I'll be short, but I came down tonight because I heard about what was going on, um, with Marie, and I wanted to say that I have, I'm a land judge's attorney, and I have served on many boards, including those appointed by Speaker of the House for infrastructure all the way down, but I've worked in a number of jurisdictions where Marie has given as much as, in wow what she's given in Brookhaven, but, a lot to recreate or to create new cities, where the people in those jurisdictions have been dying for a voice. And I saw her work in Alpharetta and in North Fulton, I saw her work in- I saw her work in creating the City of Johns Creek, which is an outstanding community. And I know that it takes a lot of creative, almost like marathon running, input to really get a new city off the ground. And a city like Brookhaven is different because it's not a, it's a dynamic community with a very dynamic population and I'm proud that you all have embraced it. I'm proud that you support Marie. And I have seen her work before and I'm sure I am one of the people who may have called emails or just stood up, up and down doing jumping jacks, saying, I think she's the best of the best. And I have a lot of respect for what Marie has done. And I also know though, good-hearted people believe in the things that they advance sometimes. And we see a lot of that, particularly, I'm a zoning attorney, I have had more than 1,000 public hearings and I've had my butt kicked and called all kinds of names, but it's emotional and these issues sometimes are emotional and sometimes people are more emotional than they should be. But our leadership has a higher responsibility and I think we are blessed to have someone who can organize the city as a corporation, as an entity. The gentleman before us who spoke, he told us about a complaint, he told us how code enforcement responded. Who's organizing all of that at the end of the day? We know our city charter makes the city manager responsible to all of that and it's a lot and we're a great city. And thank you, Marie Garrett, for what you do and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Wendy. Next.
Betsy Eggers submitted a comment card. She's not here. Her card said, thank you, City of Brookhaven, for supporting the North Fork cleanup.
Well, there was one other thing she was gonna add, so I'll take advantage of it right now. Can I do that? I'm speaking.
Real quick.
What was that, Tom?
The bell just rang.
Hurry up, come on. One minute, Joe.
Just wanted to give a shout out to the, some of the folks who really helped on Saturday's event from DeKalb County. It was Gordon Burkett from Keep DeKalb Beautiful. He did a phenomenal job. We all went out to eat after we had the event and he was adored by the crowd. They wanted to make him an honorary citizen of Brookhaven and he almost accepted. Morris Williams, who heads up the sanitation department, great collaboration with DeKalb County on this, it was a tremendous success. Chief Fulham from the DeKalb Fire and EMS came down full force, came down personally. They had the firemen out there, roping off the areas that were dangerous for everybody to, that could have caused danger. And then, of course, Chief Yandura with the, with the Brookhaven Police. Thank you, Chief. It was a really, really, really great effort from a lot of great people and that's what Betsy wanted to acknowledge as a representative of the North Fork Connectors.
Thank you. All right.
I think I have 10 seconds left.
Executive session, do we need executive session? I don't think so. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor of adjournment signify yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn.